Ah, picking her up this week.
Yes, that too.
Where is she?
Because of the AMC conference.
Okay.
You're gonna miss it?
Well, probably not now. But that's where I was leaning, was to not go, but it's just so many conflicts and,
Aw.
and responsibilities, just trying to find that balance. And now with the weather as it is, it's shifting my
Oh.
balance towards it, so.
Oh. That's adorable.
She is great.
Did you get it from a friend? A breeder?
Yes, I think a breeder, Paul.
Oh. You get along with the dog?
We don't have her yet.
Okay, well, wait one more minute, just to make sure.
Is Kirk messaging you? Rebecca?
Well, they'll kind of grow up together.
Yes. Just about there, so.
Happy to see ya.
Oh, my gosh.
Congratulations, pre-congrat-
Scout.
Continued congratulations.
Um, mini Australian shepherd.
Oh, my gosh.
Well, good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Cook County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting today, Tuesday, September 13th. And at this time, we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, as we look at our agenda, do we have any adjustments or changes, any additions to the agenda? Any adjustments or changes? Seeing or hearing none, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Swalison, is there support? Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins, we have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, we have an agenda. At this point in time, we have our public comment period and opportunity for citizens to appear before the county board. Is there anyone who would like to speak this morning? Anyone who would like to speak? Administrator Yorki, have you received any public comments through email?
Madam Chair, I have not.
All right. One more call for public comments. All right, we will move on with our consent agenda items. And is there anything a commissioner would like to pull? Anything to be pulled?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Mills, is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Swalison, we have a motion and support for our consent agenda. Any further discussion? Seeing or hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving on, we are going to have an opportunity to have some information shared by the Highway Department. We have our Highway Engineer Robbie Ass with us this morning. Welcome, Rab.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Good to see you.
How is it? All right. This one, uh, this is kind of a nice one. So, this is one of the projects that we had going on this summer, and this is the first one to wrap up. Um, and so this is the Carlson Creek Bridge replacement we did out in the Hovland area on Moose Valley Road. Uh, this is one of our UT roads, so this is one of our special town bridge projects, which was great. And so I guess what we're asking today is to kind of accept the work as complete and approve the final payment of just under $53,000 to Yuland Brothers. For a little background, Yuland Brothers was the low bid on this project. They, they had bid 400, just over $439,000 on this. This was one of those that we had put out about a year ago. Uh, it was closer to November, actually, but we ended up with five bids. So, it ranged in price from Yuland's at 439 up to about 523. Uh, so it was nice and, you know, kind of every denominator in between there. And so, yeah, we had a lot of bidders on this project. It was great to have Yuland back up there, they used to do work in the county, I think, a number of years ago. And, uh, so it was nice to have them back. The total on the project actually came in under budget, uh, which is great. It doesn't, with the, with the town bridge funds, it's not, we don't get to save any of that, and so I guess, you know, as effect on the county, you know, our coffers, I guess, for projects, it doesn't matter, realistic, you know, in that scheme of things, but to come in under budget or, you know, right around what we thought is always good, responsible way to spend taxpayer dollars. Uh, and so the final amount, um, if we approve this today, ends up being just under $415,000, as opposed to 439. Reason being, the short answer is they dug a smaller hole than we thought they would. That's about it. They moved less dirt. So, yeah, it was great to have them, and I guess if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Commissioner Mills?
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Robbie. Um, what, can you remind us what the original budgeted number was? It wasn't their low bid?
Oh, no, yeah, so we had an estimate on there from kind of our Gunflint projects. Um, I don't, I think our initial guess was, oh, yeah, it was way high, it was like $730,000. But that was kind of, we were basing that on, you know, if you remember, two summers ago, we had the Seagull and Larch Creek culverts. It was a late bid, and it was also way up the Gunflint, and I think that affected a lot of the unit prices, and so, um, we didn't pivot for this one. And so, uh, that's why our, our estimate was so high, but, you know, the nice thing is, is the more we do these, especially all over the county, the better we're able to dial in these, these estimates to our bid amounts, and hopefully there's, you know, in the future, we don't have as large discrepancies.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Swalison, I suspected you would say something.
Yeah, actually, I, I did go up and, and look at this, uh, project one complete, looks very nice, they did a very good job with it, and, uh, therefore, Madam Chair, I would motion to accept the work as complete and approve the final payment as noted to Yuland Brothers, Inc.
All right, is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins, we have a motion and support, any further discussion this morning? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You have a final payment.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you, Robbie.
All right. So now, from the assessor's office, we have some information about a public landing event request, which is kind of an unusual thing.
Well, typically, assessor Thompson would be here presenting, so it's not all on you.
Madam Chair, I can summarize this item.
All right, that would be great.
Um, so, we, uh, received a request, I think several months ago, from, um, Becca Lakey and family to, um, for permission to use the boat landing at Saginaw, right? For a wedding event, and, um, Auditor Powers was in contact with them, CIT, and got some recommendations from them as to, uh, what steps we should take as a county for liability-wise, um, and to protect from any unforeseen events. And that included insurance, um, and some other clauses, I should open up the documents, so I have it in front of me. We, I integrated those recommendations into a contract. Becca's dad, who is the holder of the insurance policy, um, signed the contract and also, um, got us a certificate of insurance that, I believe, meets the limits that CIT recommended. We, uh, do not have a policy for public use of all public facilities, and, um, that would be a good step, I think, for commissioners to make. But I think in the interim, you know, while we're working on that, um, this is a good solution for a one-time event, um, and these just don't come up very frequently. But I think, um, Becca has been persistent in, uh, asking us to allow this, and, um, I would recommend that the commissioners allow it under these, under the conditions laid out in the contract.
Well, it looked very thoroughly written, and I appreciate the fact you recognize we don't have a policy, because I'm kind of a policy procedure gal, and so that'll be something we can look at in the future, um, kind of making sure we have a fee schedule and a systematic and consistent way to permit these events. So I will gladly jump on that and, um, gather some information, and we'll, we'll look at that in the future, but in the interim, we have an event request that we need to respond to. Are there any questions that commissioners have, either for, um, our, um, county legal advice or through Becca? Commissioner Mills?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks for, thanks for being persistent and bringing this to us. I was just wondering, as far as, and thank you for, for working on it, staff, I was just wondering, considering we don't have a policy, um, and it is kind of an unusual thing, is the land commissioner, um, the best place for this type of request as we, as we go forward? Or, or, you know, what's, what would you consider best, best protocol procedure in place?
I think that's something we'll have to discuss as we, as we formulate this, this policy.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Commissioner?
Thank you. When is this gonna take place?
September 17.
What day of the week is that?
Saturday.
Saturday.
Oh. It's Saturday. Okay, so, Saturday are busy days for people coming and going at the landing. How does all this work with, uh, with a, uh, event going on and people putting their canoes in and out, and I'm trying to revisit, revisualize what that all looks like?
What?
Commissioner Mills?
Madam Chair, I, I don't have any specifics there, but it just says that the licensee will ensure that guests parking at the landing park in an orderly manner, and, and that allows for continued public use of landing as necessary, so. That's part of, part of the conditions, but I don't have the, the specifics there.
Any response you want to?
Yeah, I live right next to it, so what we were gonna do is put the tents on one side, so one side's completely open, so people can still put their boats in and canoes and stuff.
Well, that's helpful, and it also gives us an idea, and based on conversations that we've had in the future, maybe we have a process, we have a map that, where people can draw out what it's going to look like in this particular location, um, so you've given us some good ideas, so thank you for that, we appreciate it. Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Hawkins?
And, yeah, I guess maybe this is for Brady more, since we have a contract with parking spaces up there for collection of fees. Now, I'm wondering, how many parking spaces do we have, and will they all be used by wedding guests and people that want, are going into the BWCA? Not have a place to park? Sorry, I just thought of that this morning.
The, um, event will only be from 3:00 PM, and then most people will probably leave by, I'm guessing, seven or eight, you know, like the, and I'm asking all my friends from town to carpool, so that they take up more space, or less space, I mean, so hopefully that will help.
Okay, thank you so much for that.
Uh, Madam Chair?
Yes.
And Commissioner Hawkins, we, um, it is part of the contract that any parking that happens at the landing, uh, occurs in a way that allows for continued public use of the landing. So, public use has priority, um, I think that is also somewhere in here, but, yeah. And I, I really think that, um, Ms. Lakey is in a good position to ensure that, because she, she's right there and is typically, do you supervise the landing? Do you have that contract, right?
No, I mean, I'm right next to it, so I'm always, you know, by it, and people come and talk to me all the time, but it is Voyager who kind of manages it, yeah.
That's right.
Other questions or comments?
And this is the end of their season.
Yeah, yeah.
For the most part.
That's true. Commissioner Mills?
After 3:00 PM seems like a pretty, pretty safe time to not, I mean, sometimes my family gets going a little late, but, but we try not to put in after 3:00 PM.
Sunset comes early these days, so, um, one would be wise to depart in the morning. All right, other questions or comments?
Just, it sounds really beautiful, and, and I'm very excited for you, thank you.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
We're so excited to have it up there. Thank you.
All right, well, I would entertain a motion to ratify this request.
So, move, Madam Chair.
All right, is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Starley, we have a motion and support, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Enjoy your day on Saturday, that special day. Great. All right. We will move on now to land services, and I see that Tim Nelson is here to talk about amending our Parks and Trails Commission bylaws. And, um, wait just a moment.
What show?
Thank you, Mr. Keyboard.
What show he says?
Just congratulating the brackets.
There you go.
Priorities. Okay. Good morning, Madam Chair, commissioners, everyone. This here is basically a tweaking of the bylaws for the Parks and the Trails Commission, um, and really making it reflect more of the composition of like the Planning Commission or other, like Board of Adjustments such that we have. We, when we originally created the Parks and Trails Commission, we tried to do so in an attempt to get a geographic distribution of it and diversity from each of the districts, and, and kind of mandating in the bylaws that members would come from each of the specific districts, and we've had, uh, some trouble being able to maintain membership from a particular district or another, whatever, and we have others that, that can, so, like we do with the, uh, Planning Commission, we basically try to go for geographic diversity, and we shoot for that, and if, but if we can't get it, we're still able to appoint from anywhere within the county. And so, uh, basically with, with that, and I will say too, that, um, this had been created, you know, before COVID, and it went strong for a while during the COVID years, as with everything, it kind of tapered off, we had a hard time, uh, keeping a quorum going. Uh, over this last year, though, we've been meeting instead, if you read through the bylaws, we, we were mandated to meet six times, uh, a year, um, which had been typically every other month or so, but we've been meeting every month this year, and we have been able to maintain a quorum for the vast majority of that time. So that hasn't been as much of the issue as just ensuring that we reflect what the mission and the goals of the trails, of the comprehensive trails plan is, and we figured it would be better to try to get more of a diversity among the different types of user groups, rather than just a simple geographic diversity on that. And so, uh, we, we discussed it over a few meetings and, uh, decided that, uh, we would try to make a recommendation and propose that instead of having eight, uh, members, we bring it to seven members, because whether it's eight or seven, you still, your quorum number, uh, is a little messed up that way. So bringing it to seven members, five members of which would be able to be appointed from any of the districts of the commissioners, then one from the City of Grand Marais, and one from the, uh, Grand Portage Reservation, and then, uh, they also would like to have the at-large and alternate, be an alternate, so that at-large person could be an alternate to any one of the members who might be absent on there. So that would really be able to facilitate getting that, uh, getting and maintaining the quorum, and we also made a, a small tweak to have, uh, instead of calling for six meetings, we would say there would be a minimum of six meetings, uh, indicating that we, at least at this point, still want to be able to meet on a monthly basis. And then stating that, that, that alternate, uh, would be able to be an alternate for any of the positions, uh, that's in there. So those, those are basically the tweaks, um, that are made in the bylaws, and according to the bylaws and the, uh, and the ordinance that we have, we need to bring them to you for review and approval.
Absolutely. So we did have some discussion about this, Commissioner Swalison and I, yesterday, in fact, and, um, one of the things we wanted to ask is, um, when you're looking at user groups, um, are you considering people with disabilities as a user group?
Not as a specific user group, but that, that actual subject has come up quite a bit, uh, in our discussions with especially the US Forest Service and other trail groups, uh, and, and looking at grants and such for, uh, being able to enhance, uh, trails and make, um, facilities and trails more suitable for, uh, folks with any kind of disabilities and such. So that has been a very active, uh, portion of the discussions, but it really hasn't been identified as a specific group.
Okay, all right. Well, I think it's just important that that discussion occurred, and I appreciate that. Other questions or concerns? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to accept the, the recommendation to amend the current bylaws.
All right, we have a motion, is there support? Thank you, Commissioner Swalison, we have a motion and support, any further discussion? Commissioner Mills?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I just wanted to thank, um, Director Nelson of, of his work on this. Um, the Parks and Trails Commission, um, is, uh, a relatively new commission, and, um, and has hit a number of bumps and hurdles, um, through its formation and, and up, up till now, and, and still, um, is really hoping for, for more support there, but, um, you know, very appreciative of the work that Director Nelson has done, and, and I think the commission is pretty excited about, um, things moving forward and just, you know, better handling how, um, how the group operates and, and interacts, uh, both with the public, with, um, uh, community partners, and, um, and I think this will be an improvement.
And I would like to comment that having that number of seven members is really a wise decision.
Yeah.
Very good, very good. We don't like those tie votes.
That was a, it was a very funny, I thought it was funny, I don't know if Administrator Yorki got any, any entertainment out of it, um, but, but just, you know, trying to go through what quorum is and, and how that works, and how the numbers work, and, and what's required, and, and just getting that language correct, and, and Director Nelson was integral in getting that language spelled out.
He's very skilled in that area. Definitely. All right, so we have a motion? And support, yep. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much. All right, down to item seven, Auditor Powers.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first item is the business subsidy policy. We created one back in April, or you did, um, because it's a requirement in order to give a subsidy, which our abatement with, uh, Red Five LLC, the TOFTI project, is a business subsidy, it's over $150,000, that's the standard. And so this, this is a minimum requirement to have a policy like this in place. We left out of that policy, um, job goals, for example, and there may be other revisions. We didn't need those goals for that project, but the board said, let's look at that again, uh, in September. So September is here, and, and I have not, uh, spent any time on this, and I doubt if anyone else has either, but I think we should at least, um, have a plan in place, um, probably include some people like Jason Hale, who is here, who has some background in such policies. I mean, you have many options, you could, the option might be to leave it and wait, um, until you have projects where you, you do, you may be looking at job goals and work on it at that time, or perhaps just some basic goals, we started to look at some, and then said, well, let's just put that off. I'm hoping Jason could add a little light to the subject, um, if he could come forward.
All right. Good morning, Jason.
Good morning, Chair, good morning, commissioners. I'm sorry, I arrived just in time. That's the most efficient use of your time. Absolutely, yeah, I planned that, for sure, yeah. Auditor Powers, uh, mentioned this to me yesterday, uh, and first of all, I'd be delighted to be a part of that conversation if it's, if we're going to have it. I guess maybe a Cliff Notes, uh, comment on this is that, um, traditionally economic development is housing and tax base, or, excuse me, I'm sorry, jobs and tax, obviously housing's on my brain, uh, jobs and tax base. Clearly, that has been reassessed even at the state level in the last six years, uh, with the tight labor market. There's been some butting of heads, especially in local government versus, um, federal and state governments, because if you're, if, if providing assistance is reliant on job creation, and there's already a tight labor market, you're just adding to the problem. So I think, uh, I think it really is project-specific. So, for example, I worked on, on one of the abatement policies for the City of Duluth, um, looking at, how does it make sense, do we need to tweak it, all those sorts of things, and worked with the county, um, on a couple of abatement projects as well. And I guess, I would say that, um, I would recommend that the board really think about, there are things you can require, certainly, I think that, that it, it doesn't have to be restricted to those two elements. So, tax base, it kind of goes without saying, um, that's anything that's created that's going to be on the tax rules, is a good thing, that's, supports the county functions, et cetera. Other things, such as prevailing wage, job growth, um, there are other metrics you could do too, like, um, including a, a certain element or a certain, like, for example, this project needs to include square footage of blank for retail or, or for, um, daycare or something like that. I'm just saying, and, and I guess in, in summary, because this goes a lot of ways, it really is project-specific in what you're trying to get out of it. Having, having job requirements, if you were to do another abatement or do a policy for tax increment or tax abatement assistance, having a job requirement's going to be very difficult, and, and the state and, and most entities don't count, um, construction jobs, because they're temporary, uh, and as we know, it's hard enough to find a contractor here, so, so it just, it seems, um, for a long time, it was a really intuitive and useful, uh, metric, um, but recent history says that it doesn't always make sense, and if the output is going to be, let's say, 10, 10 units of housing or something, uh, you might create a half, half FTE or something for a maintenance crew or something like that, so I just, I guess I would exercise caution in putting a, an overt jobs goal, um, and even honestly, even with statute and some, some, like, for example, uh, tax increment, you can, there are a list of, um, objectives or community goods that are, can be met, and you can sort of exempt out jobs, you can say zero, it's not the ambition of this particular project to create jobs. So, give yourself some latitude, would be my recommendation.
Thank you. Commissioner Swalison?
Yeah, I guess it follows right along with my thinking, um, as we see things shifting, it makes more sense to leave, as we do now, we have our, you know, our policy of how we set up to do abatements, but then it requires the specifics. You set up an agreement with, for that item before you're completed, just as we're doing with the current one, and that makes more sense to me now than it did when we first, you know, were putting that in. I kind of felt like we were just kicking it down the road, but as things have evolved, I agree with Jason that it, it just seems to me to make more sense to be, be able to have that ability to tailor it to what it is you're trying to do with this project, and then build in those things and, on an agreement. However, I guess my only caution on that, as I talk through it, is what effect does that have on the developers when that's just left open, on what those things would be? I guess they, they get to be involved with the negotiations, so there's that piece of it, but do you, do you sense or see that it could, if it's left wide open, that it might discourage people from entertaining, coming up, you know, engaging with it?
That's, Commissioner, that's a great question. I'd, I'd say there are two things here. One, you have the policy, uh, which basically outlines what is eligible to receive that sort of assistance. And then you have the development agreement. So, in my mind, um, the policy is an opportunity for the county to say, these are the things we're prioritizing, uh, that we know need assistance or that we want to see done in this community, and we're willing to, we're willing to contemplate abatement for these types of things. Could be housing, childcare, whatever, you know, there's a list of things. Um, and in fact, there were two different policies, where, where I came from, it was housing and then economic development, because they seemed at the time they were discreet, now they're very messy. So, I think that if you were to leave it from a developer perspective, if you were to leave the, the policy, um, flexible, and you, to your, to use your word just a moment ago, Commissioner, the negotiation's what really matters. So if they know, oh, it's eligible to, you know, receive this sort of assistance, they know that there's going to be an agreement, just like the Saw, Saw Bill project, uh, that's the opportunity for the board, um, you know, to reflect the community's priorities in the negotiation, so the development agreement is really what's going to solidify. You're eligible for, uh, our policy says you're eligible based on what we're trying to do, now let's talk about what we want to mutually get out of this project. So I think you have plenty of coverage there from, from a, um, agreement and contractual perspective to get what you think is important through that negotiation.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just wanted to add on, uh, this point, and I think this is pretty consistent with what you've just heard from Mr. Hale. The statute talks about how the subsidy agreement and specific to, um, wage and job goals, et cetera. to wage and job goals, it says, "The subsidy agreement must include goals for the number of jobs created, et cetera." But, it does say, "After a public hearing, if the creation or retention of jobs is determined not to be a goal, the wage and job goals may be set at zero." So, I think that supports an argument that we should be a little more flexible in that policy, in our policy. So, for example, under section three, paragraph two, the red text that I assume we're considering adding says, "Creation and retention of jobs are not goals for this policy and are set at zero." The statute says, "We should set job goals at zero only after a public hearing." So, you know, maybe the more appropriate language would be creation and retention of jobs. Goals for creation and retention of jobs shall be set after the public hearing. That's it.
Molly, I'm sorry. I, I put this on the agenda, and those were already, the red marks are in the final policy. I was just highlighting them. So, we had the public hearing, and then we set it with no jobs at that time, so that we could provide the subsidy. We did that in April.
Right.
So, so that's already in the policy, all of the, the note, the jobs are not the goal.
Yeah, I'm saying if we're considering amending the policy, I would suggest amending that sentence and then the other one that you had in red.
To make it, to change it to...
Just consistent with the statute, so that it says, "Goals for job creation and wages shall be set after the public hearing."
It appears in conflict with the current statute, because the current statute says it may be set at zero, but only after the public hearing.
We did that.
For that one instance, but our policy doesn't reflect that language. It basically just says, ahead of the public meeting, that we don't have any goals for that.
Madam Chair, is the statute for agreements or for the policy?
It's talking about the subsidy agreement, but they should match, right? I mean, the policy setting up the process should match.
I'm confused.
The statute related to the subsidy agreement, which comes next in the process.
And so, the statute doesn't apply to the policy?
No, this, this statute is not, let's see, this statute is related to regulating local and state business subsidies. This statute section that I'm referring to, subdivision four, does talk about wage and job goals. It says, "The goals for the number of jobs to be created or retained, let's see, after a public hearing, if the creation or retention of jobs is determined not to be a goal, wage and job goals may be set at zero."
So, the, the policy can't preemptively say that job goals are zero. As each, as each proposal comes forward, job goals have to be considered, and if they're deemed to be not relevant, then they can be omitted.
I, I understand what you're saying. I disagree with the interpretation. I think that we, we, our priorities are listed in this policy. We had a public hearing about the policy, so then we can set it at zero. But, what I hear you guys saying in the interpretation is that that's for the agreements, but I think our larger, you know, vision is captured with the policy.
If I can respond, Madam Chair. So, maybe I should have read this paragraph in its entirety, or it would be more helpful to have, for you to have it in front of you. But, it starts by saying, "The subsidy agreement, in addition to any other goals, must include goals for the number of jobs created, which may include separate goals for the number of blah, 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 and wage goals for any jobs created."
So, that's the agreement, yeah.
Yeah, that's the agreement.
Time for, thank you.
Yeah, and then after that, it says, "After a public hearing, you can set those at zero." The public hearing is on the subsidy agreement.
Thank you. That is helpful.
So, given our discussion, I'm thinking it would make sense to have a small group take a look at this. I would like to consider that Jason Hale and also Beth Drost from the EDA participate in that committee to review it in light of statute, and just make sure we have a good, general, solid policy that aligns.
And in the agreement, we did have the public hearing for them. We didn't put, I don't remember that there was language, like you say, specifically on setting the job goals to zero, but there weren't any job goals.
Right.
So, it fits in that regard. We didn't make the statement, and that probably, like you're saying, that probably should be in there, you're going to match it.
Mr. Hale?
Madam Chair, may I make just one more comment quickly? Thank you. Just to corroborate Attorney Hicken here, the statute's drafted with, again, historically, the intent is to focus on creation of, that's economic development and business subsidies, to focus on job creation and tax base. Having said that, like, the HRA, for example, has a financial assistance application we have approved and created for folks to, if they want to request TIF or tax abatement, they fill this out. Part of that includes jobs proposed to be created. So, and often, it will be, for housing projects, it's like two, you know, right? There's a, depending on the scale of the project, there's two FTE equivalents or one or something like that. The point is, you don't have to say, you know, "The objective of this policy is to create 100 jobs" or something like that. You just have to state, "Here's the jobs that are likely to be created out of, out of this project or through this project." And you can list part-time jobs too, or temporary, rather, so like, there's going to be 50 people working on this, for example. But, after the public hearing, to the attorney's point, then you can say, "So, one or two jobs will likely be the outcome, but jobs are not the focus of this project." So, you have to state what it's likely to be created, or at least address that. And then in the agreement, and again, after the public hearing, because conceptually, the state wanted to say, "Well, we want to ensure that that's not a, on a maybe subsidy-by-subsidy basis, that's not a priority for each one of those." And, and often, it will say, you know, "We're going to create two jobs, and, oh, by the way, that's not actually the point of this project or not the focus." You just, it's more of a kind of checking that box, so to speak. So, there's a, it's, it's a little, in other words, the statute hasn't been amended to really reflect the fact that we, that's not, we're in a situation now where that's not a priority or that's not the thing. But, in the future, as we're kind of experiencing now, when, it's a matter of time, when the job market shifts and the county is interested in prioritizing, let's say, high-paying, quality jobs, because that's a difference than jobs writ large, right? So, well-paying, family-sustaining jobs, that can be incorporated into the policy if that's the objective. But, either way, it has to be addressed.
All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Hale. Commissioner Mills?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Attorney Hicken, for your patience with me and my misunderstanding, and thank you for your work on this, Brady, and your comments too. Jason, thank you.
Any other discussion? I would just like to recommend that we have a group take a look at this policy and come back to our board with some recommendations. Commissioner Mills?
Is there a timeline we should be aware of for, for this policy or the agreements? We have the policy in place. It seems like maybe it's out of compliance with statute.
Tomorrow, tomorrow?
That's so strongly, but, no.
There's not really a timeline?
No, I wouldn't say we're out of compliance with the statute.
Yeah, our attorney, Bob.
In congruence?
Bob Toski was in agreement.
With this?
Yeah.
Okay.
With this version.
Okay.
I have a question for the board. Is this, this is the business subsidy policy umbrella, right? This isn't just abatement, this is the larger, okay.
Right.
In that event, I would recommend, the sooner the better, so we can be clear with developers as we're talking about opportunities, this is how the county frames the opportunity, and here's the policy. So, I'm, I'm happy to do it tomorrow, whenever folks want to meet.
See, tomorrow!
That's great, Commissioner.
Well, let's think about, within the next month, getting a group together, taking a look at that, and then reporting back to our board with some recommendations. Is everybody in agreement with that?
I'm happy to say fully, yes.
All right. Well, thank you. We have leadership.
I'm going to volunteer.
All right.
Unless there's somebody else, no?
Well, and maybe, because we are with the EDA and the HRA, it is a natural fit.
I just also want to, I guess overtly, thank this group and all of our community members and partners to recognize our real, our real needs with, with housing, and that being our focal point. It's, it's funny, you know, as we age, our minds become less malleable, less flexible. But, it's just funny to be in regional meetings or statewide meetings or conversations where either our peers, commissioners, or whomever are still like, "Jobs, we need jobs, we need jobs." And it's like, that had been the case for so long. It's just not very relevant right now. It's just, it's just interesting. So, thank you for recognizing our real needs.
And it's interesting how quickly that changes.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Like, in two year, I mean, it was three years.
I don't know, unless you're in mining. I know some people out of jobs right now.
Yeah, yeah. Well, that's, that's a good point, you know.
All right.
It's, this is a little bit of a tangent, but we just had another report from Deed at the, Northeast Minnesota Office of Job Training, and Minnesota has an unemployment rate that is the lowest in the nation, and in our region, isn't maybe faring quite as well because of some of the disruptions we've had in, in mining operations. But, yeah, it's, it's significantly low, and it's a record for Minnesota's history as well. So, it's just really interesting times.
Any other comments, Auditor Powers? We'll circle back to you.
Yeah. No, I think that's a, that's a good step, so that it's, I've looked at this law for years in regards to revolving loan fund and other things. It's a confusing statute. What is the subsidy level is confusing. It needs to be rewritten. No one's taken that to task, but that should, I think that should happen too. But, anyway, it would be good to get us clarity on the, on the policy and how agreements might fit with the policy and the exact language, when we should, just some basics, when we should look at it further and be ready for next steps.
All right, great. Well, we will do that. We will get to work. Mr. Hale?
Sorry, one last quick question. Actually, Auditor Powers just triggered this. Is there, I mean, when we meet about it, I'm sure I'll see it, but do you know if there is a trigger point in the, in the policy currently that says, so to your point, for example, if it's over $50,000, it triggers a business subsidy policy of Cook County or something? Or is it just, is it any amount?
It's $150,000 in the statute.
Okay, I didn't know if there was explicit less, because you, I think you can go more restrictive than that for a local policy. You can't go less, so I just didn't know.
Yeah, we didn't make it more restrictive.
Thank you.
All right, great. Well, we have some work to do.
So, Madam Chair, just to clarify, I know Commissioner Hawkins would like to participate in this group. Is there a second commissioner who would also like to participate?
I'd be happy to, on behalf of the EDA in particular.
Okay, great.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Board.
All right. And now, we'll move on to truth and taxation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At the time that we, at the meeting where we approved the preliminary levy, we have to set the day and the time for the truth and taxation meeting, which can meet any time between November 25th and December 30th. And last year, we did it on the 9th of December. We've always run it around AMC, one side or the other. So, look at your schedules and see what...
I've looked at schedules, and I actually even looked at what's going on in this room, and came up with November 29th. It's a Tuesday. And so, if people want to check their schedules and see if that works. It's a fifth Tuesday of the month, which is very unusual. Why, you know, that's a rationale for, it's unlikely there will be other meetings on that night. So, hopefully, we can capture not only this group, but the community.
And it is after Thanksgiving.
That's correct.
So, people should be around. That was the problem we had a few years ago, was they were away for Thanksgiving.
Right, yeah. That week before, a lot of people are gone. That's correct.
Madam Chair, the other thing to note about the December schedule is that, you know, ordinarily, business meetings of this body occur the second and fourth Tuesday of the month. The fourth Tuesday would be in between Christmas and New Year's. And so, what we did last year, because the same situation occurred, was to have business meetings the second and third Tuesdays of the month. And I would suggest that we follow a similar practice this year.
I think that would be wise. So, we'd look at our meetings then for the month of December, being the second and third Tuesdays, and then having our truth and taxation on Tuesday, November 29th. Commissioner Mills?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can you remind me what, what date we need to set the final levy by?
By December 30th.
30th.
And so, in years past, and I'm an admitted procrastinator here, in years past, we often wait to the last minute, because things can change up to the last minute. If, if, if you're considering holidays and holiday travel and that, and that, and that sort of thing, that maybe isn't the best move, but just wanted to put that out there in case, in case that's worth considering.
Well, and I, I think that was the idea behind having the second business meeting on the third week of the month, so that if there is a need, you know, if we, if we have TNT on the 29th, there's discussion on the 13th, and there are loose ends that have to be tied up, then we have a second opportunity to get that done.
Well said, well planned. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Any further discussion?
So, we're going to have it on the 20th, 29th? 29th, okay.
Of November.
November. We do need a motion.
And it, yeah, and it can't end before 6:00. We've typically started it at 6:00.
Correct. So, let's just build that into the motion, Commissioner Spalleson.
So, I would make the motion that we hold our truth and taxation meeting on Tuesday, November 29th, at 6:00 PM in this room. And I would further motion that we conduct our business meetings in December on the second and third weeks of the month.
Thank you so much. Is there support?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Starley. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Madam Chair, just to clarify, those, the dates of those business meetings in December, again, would be December 13th and 20th.
Thank you.
At the regular time, 8:30 AM.
Further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have some meetings.
We always have meetings.
All right. Now, we're going to talk a little bit, just information only, about our local option sales tax. Oh, Commissioner Mills?
How might that work with our Public Health and Human Services Board meeting on the 20th?
Oh, that's a great question.
Last year...
I'm a little slow, but I can't.
How did we do that last year?
It was tight.
I'm not remembering.
I think we pushed things off and it got really scrunched.
Yeah, it did get tight.
Previous, when they would be held on the same day, they would go first, and then the board would meet afterwards, because they were more regular timed.
And that's what I recall that we did. We actually had that, you know, the Public Health and Human Services meeting, and then rolled into our final meeting, pack of lunch.
Good advice.
So, we should definitely have a conversation with Allison McIntyre.
Well, and just, just so we're aware of that order of, you know, how we want to schedule it.
We need to work together.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll resolve that and then present options at the next meeting.
Thank you.
That's good. All right. Thank you, and thanks for bringing that up. All right. Auditor Powers?
Madam Chair, I just wanted to talk a little bit about the sales tax and the termination. You guys discussed that at a committee of the whole meeting. I wasn't here. And then the question got back to me to kind of confirm what was discussed there. So, I looked at it. I asked Molly also, because it's kind of, it seems unusual. And we concurred on what it actually says, is that the tax, the 1% local option sales tax, ends at the later of 20 years, or at an earlier time if the board would decide by ordinance. And so, it really, you would expect it to be the earlier of 20 years, or if you pay it off early, but it's not. years, or if you pay it off early, but it's not. Um, it is the opposite. So, once the bonds are paid off, projects are completed, then the money is to be put into the general fund at that time. And it can be used as, as the board sees fit. Um, so, the earliest that you could pay those bonds off is twenty-twenty-seven. You could pay the bonds for twenty-twenty-eight and beyond in February of twenty-twenty-seven, assuming you have enough money. The way, uh, sales tax is coming in, we will have, uh, an excess at that time, and you will be able to pay them off. But, you know, this is a long way off to get into a lot of details regarding it. But at that time, you'll have, you'll have to consider that, um, you can't use, start using the money until you pay the bonds off. Um, so, you'd have to make that decision to do that, um, at that time. Otherwise, you can let it go for the full twenty years, or later. The schedule for the bonds actually goes till, uh, twenty-thirty-two, which is even longer than twenty years. So, you have these options of collecting additional sales tax even out to that point. Just let the payments continue, uh, but if you want the money earlier, pay them off earlier. So, you'll have a lot of options to consider. But it in fact says that. And, uh, and then you can decide how you want to use it. Um, in the, in the past, we've tried to use it the way that it was originally intended. But there's no restriction in that statute. There's nothing in there that says that. So, lots of things to consider.
Mr. Mills?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Brady. In summary, does that mean, it, hard to know the future, but your prediction is that, or your estimate is that twenty-twenty-seven will be the earliest that we would have additional funds?
That's not an estimate. That's just how the bonds are written. It, there's requirements built into every bond. This is the earliest date. It's for the people who invest in them so that they know they're gonna have their return for this length of time, and then they bid on them based on that. So, you can't do it by law. So, that's the earliest date. But then anytime after that, pick a date if you have enough funds. And, uh, unless there's massive recession upon recession, there's gonna be lots of funds left over at that time. Um, those payments, now that we refinanced, are down, they're below a million dollars a year in payments. And we topped two million, uh, last year, twenty-twenty-one. And we're heading north of that this year. I would never estimate that going forward. I mean, we're way overdue for a recession. You hear about it all the time. It never happens.
Don't say that, Brady.
Yeah, I know.
So, so twenty-twenty-seven is the earliest that we will be able to use any additional monies that may be collected?
And then you can pay off twenty-twenty-eight and beyond on that date.
Well, that's incredible.
It is.
Yeah.
It is. And, uh, there's another, uh, sales tax provision for a town. It's in the same approval that year, and they wrote it the opposite way. They said the earlier of. So, they, I don't think it was a mistake. I think they clearly, I don't know why, I don't know what was said in the room, but, but there are others like this. The first one we had wasn't written exactly like this, but it had the same basic effect. You could have collected additional funds on that one by running it to the end of the bonds. Um, so, it's consistent here, fair, fairly between the one in nineteen ninety-four and this one in two thousand nine.
Thank you for that information. It's very, very helpful. Commissioner Swalison?
Yeah, I, it, it's interesting. I think it's great that the options are there, and you can think of all these various uses that it might go to, you know, starting at that date. You also need to consider the perspective that when the bond was issued, that was, of course, the taxes a burden on those that live, purchase, do those things here, right? And so, there was an agreement on what it was going to be used for. And so, keep that in mind as you make decisions on how you're gonna do that for the conversations with the general public.
Right.
Right? I mean, that, that's just very, very important. You don't want to lose sight of that and just kind of head in one direction without doing that piece first. And make sure you've got some general agreement that that's the right thing to do.
And I think it was very helpful that you talked about that original intent.
Yeah.
Commissioner Mills?
I really, thank you, Madam Chair. I really appreciate that. Commissioner Swalison, and, um, things change, you know? So, come twenty-twenty-seven, we'll see what our community's priorities are.
Exactly.
I'll be surprised if housing is off the radar at that point, but, uh...
I sure would be too.
Yeah. But I think it is very important that we include the community in those conversations. Uh, it's, there's, uh, huge impacts both on the taxation of community members as well as, uh, the potential use of, of dollars.
Yeah. Absolutely. Well, thank you so much, Auditor Powers.
And the next item is the general fund budget review. This is way overdue, but we finally got there. Um, we'll pick up for the rest of the year. In, in the main, you can see it's, you know, fifty percent of the year, you would expect fifty percent, and our revenues are at sixty-five percent. Our expenses are a little below half at forty-six percent. And the levy then, the net levy right now is twenty-eight percent, but that will come back closer to normal by the end of the year. The, the revenue is high primarily because of our federal, uh, payment in lieu of tax that comes in, in the first half of the year, which is almost two million in the both types, uh, three types, actually. And then, beyond that, you can see where the yellow highlights, where some of the, uh, bigger discrepancies between fifty percent average. And then you can see some of the, uh, descriptions of the main causes of that below, highlighted in red. And I would be happy to read through each and every one of them, or just take questions.
Are there any questions for Auditor Powers?
I have questions.
All right, Commissioner Hawkins?
Um, so, thank you for this. When can we expect to see the quarter three report?
Uh, right after quarter three is done.
Okay.
It should be October.
So...
We'll, we'll have to do a quarterly report, so by the, by the third week.
So, 'cause I think, I think it's kind of important when we're talking budgets to know our actual year-to-date figures. And these are old, so, you know, trying to guess what did that, what's ahead. So, that would be really nice to have for future budget discussions.
Yeah, we've been really held up in the office. Uh, we have new auditors this year, first time, a private audit, and we're cleaning up and learning a lot of new things. And so, we've taken our time to get through that. It's not quite finished. It's almost finished. And, uh, but, we're cleaning up a lot of things in the past, and Kelly is learning a ton that she didn't know before. So, I'm really happy about the change we made for her and for the understanding of a lot of the process that we didn't have before. But, uh, that's just about done, and so, we'll be able to, we'll stay up on these. I promise.
Thank you. Um, just curious about, um, the city grant rate payments. Have, have they got caught up with? Because here, they're saying they're behind, and I realize it's where, three months later, um...
Oh, that's the city prosecution?
Y M C A and the prosecution. Y M C A, they, it wasn't showing up. And you said something about being in January, and it was like, well, then it should have been there.
Well, no, actually, the comment there is that, oh, okay. Yeah, this is, uh, right. The, it does show up in January. So, this, we tried this year, first time, to use, um, accruals, and the payment in January is for the previous year. So, it's a month off. So, we get a, at, when the year ends with the Y M C A, we give the report to the city, because they want to see the results, and then they make the payment. So, that's why it's not there. We got the payment for twenty-twenty-one in early twenty-twenty...
Okay, we did get the twenty-one payment.
Yes.
Because usually, we, we see it.
I know. We changed the format.
Changed the system on me.
We're gonna decide whether we want to keep this, because maybe it's more confusing to use accruals than not. I'm not sure. So, it's kind of six of one, half of dozen of the other. It's just you have to explain.
As long as you're consistent in which...
Right. So, in this case, we have to explain that, yes, we got the payment in January of twenty-twenty-two for twenty-twenty-one. We'll get the next one in January of twenty-twenty-three.
We just change it every year?
No.
I just teased it. I teased it.
Every quarter. Every quarter we're changing it.
Yeah, we're gonna do accruals in even quarters, cash basis in the odd quarters. So, keep that in mind.
Forget that in writing.
That in writing, yeah.
All right. Well, thank you very much for the information and, uh, helping us out with our questions. Um, any further questions that we have for Auditor Powers?
Just as for a motion to accept it, unless Stacy has another question.
Well, I guess, yeah, I'll save those for when we have our budget discussion, because it kind of works together, doesn't it?
Well, I'd move to approve, um, to accept the second quarter twenty-twenty-two general fund budget report. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Starley. We have a motion and support. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thanks. And the, the last item is the, this should be easy, the state grant agreement for the airport master plan. So, we've already gotten, uh, the federal grant. This is the state companion grant that comes with it, that, uh, they allocate any funding they're going to. They, uh, decided to give us five percent, so ninety percent state, five percent federal. And we've got the other twenty-five thousand plus to pay out of our levy and funds. And this also allows the state to manage the grant for us. So, any questions?
Commissioner Hawkins?
So, this is, tw, this twenty-five thousand is for twenty-twenty-three. Am I right? Is that where the money?
No, it's this, it's this year's project.
So, it's already been budgeted in the airport budget, which I'm anxious to see the next airport budget. It wasn't included in our packet. So, I guess I'll have that question on our next item.
Other questions? Not I'd entertain a motion to approve by resolution the grant agreement? Commissioner Mills?
Support?
All right. So, we have Commissioner Swalison with a motion and support by Commissioner Mills. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much, Auditor Powers. Commissioner Mills?
Do we have a break, Madam Chair?
I think that would be very appropriate. Um, let's, I was gonna say take five. Let's take seven.
Thank you.
Don't want to get into jazz. All right.
Right, there's something coming up.
No. Actually, there's a line on my paper. It's like, okay. Because we know the next section is gonna take some time.
Yeah, absolutely. Yep.
So, you give, I did do, she's on another connect.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, we're selected.
I'm gonna see her later today.
Okay. I'll let you break through that.
All right. At least we have a good place to call.
Great. I need it for me.
I brought some bars up there. It's a little bar, and I said, I'm gonna have to bring back your dream bar. I thought we needed some sweet today.
Uh, I won't say no, I'm sure. It was called a dream bar, for goodness sake. Thank you for the, uh, offer. Did you make them?
Yes. And I made a pan, and we ate quite a few. And then this morning, I said, ooh, we shouldn't have these in our house anymore.
Dangerous. Yeah, absolutely. Understood. Thank you. I will relieve you of that smaller item.
Hi.
Hello.
I haven't, I haven't been watching any HR meetings, so I was just wondering if there's discussions there.
There, yeah, yeah.
I'm trying to, I was just wondering if there's discussions about, uh, public...
The primary challenge of public having these, they need some operation education. So, we're...
We go till three, so then...
Okay, that's doable.
Yeah, but, you know, as long as I get partway in the daylight.
Yep.
I'm good. All right.
So, how long?
On the way back, my son get out of hospital today. So, he's been in there since, this will be his twelfth day. He had back surgery, but it affected his sciatic nerve. He could not use his left leg. So, he's been in therapy. He moved from the fourth to the eighth. I said, huh, now you're in the penthouse. But he got more occupational therapy and all that. And I think with the nurses' strike, he wasn't go back till Thursday, but I think because of all that, and, so, his wife got a hospital bed, because he can't climb stairs right now, because they have sixteen. They always ask you, how many stairs?
How many stairs you have, yep?
I said, well, just tell him two. Well, he said, to get to the top floor, you can't do two. I have to do more. Anyway, he's getting better, but he's been, been a tough one for a guy who's so active all the time. However, he played his last golf game before he went in.
But at the same time, you know...
And he's already probably looking forward to next spring playing.
Yeah, that's for sure. Oh, dear. Wow. You never know. Surgeries are surgeries.
Yeah, that surgery is, it's kind of dangerous.
It is, yeah.
So delicate.
He was on the table. They took him in at seven-thirty, and he never got operated out until ten-thirty, and it was over at four-thirty. So, he was on the table a long time. And of course, he was just laying there first, and then they put him on his stomach. Surgery, uh, anyway, he retired June first, so...
Oh, he's retired?
He's retired, yeah. My, what does this mean, retired? His mother keeps working.
Well, you can be, you can retire if you keep working.
That's true.
You retired. I retired.
Retired, yeah.
You can keep working in public services.
Indeed.
Sure. Oh, yes. That's right. I thought about that. Like, when I retire, maybe I'll be a county commissioner. There you go. There you go. You have all kinds of experience now.
That's right.
But that's not really retiring, though.
I know.
that are proposed in this budget. And for the, for the sake of the public, I would remind folks that, you know, the, the goal today is to set a preliminary budget and levy, which is a not-to-exceed amount. And the final budget and levy are set in December. And that, that has to be an amount that is equal to the preliminary levy or lower. So you can't go up from whatever the board's decision is today. You can go down from it. And I know that there are some, some items that commissioners are going to want to discuss. But in any case, so our, just to summarize, the proposed use of fund balance is equal to about $1.175 million. That would put the preliminary levy at 3.95%. Without the use of fund balance, that levy would be higher. And I recall Brady from when we were calculating it initially, I remember around 11% was the number at that time. And it's probably a little bit lower. But anyway, so the, the use of fund balance does knock that down to just under 4%. The other thing I'll mention about the budget for folks who are watching, we, we are trying to add detail to the budget each year to make it more understandable. We do have cover sheets for each of the major accounts in the general fund to highlight any significant changes within those funds. And that's just to let folks know at, at a single glance, without having to look through the numbers, where the big changes are. The other thing that we do have as part of this document, which we didn't have previously, was the overall organizational chart, which I want to recognize Leah Ekstrom again for, for having put together. That lets you know kind of what our total FTE count is. And again, personnel expenses are always the biggest part of the budget. For the general fund, they account for roughly 2/3 of all expenses. So, so that's kind of at a very high level. That's what the budget is looking like, and I would certainly stand or sit for questions.
All right. Commissioner Mills?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Administrator Yorkey. Could you go into a little more detail about the use of fund balance for the general fund? We, you know, we've, we've talked a fair amount with the PHHS board about the, the use of fund balance, if, if needed. And, and also, we had a little bit more detail with the highway department's use of fund balance. So I'd just like to discuss that a little bit more.
Sure.
And maybe I don't need to preface it as saying, as I generally try to shy away from that. I don't like, I don't like using that for ongoing expenses and operations.
Right, right. So again, I mean, you know, the major additions to the general fund budget include a couple of positions. We've got the, in land services, we do have the proposed addition of a .5 FTE. We also, let's see, the other positions, oh, we have a, a new position proposed for MIS. And that's something that actually, that position had been vacant, it had been budgeted some time ago, but hadn't been filled. And that would be to provide general support maintaining the network. And also, we have gotten requests from a number of departments for additional resources in terms of training. And so that's, that's something that, that we're trying to address through the addition of that position. And basically, I mean, the, the application of the fund balance, I, I should mention also for, for members of the public who are watching, we do have fund balance targets that we try to maintain. And that's, that's to ensure that come a rainy day, that recession that Brady mentioned dangerously earlier in the meeting, if that were to occur, that we would have sufficient funding to provide a cushion to, to maintain operations if, if needed. But, but basically, Commissioner, I mean, the, the use of fund balance here is, is to offset some of those new expenses.
And so those are ongoing expenses.
They are ongoing expenses. Correct.
The other, the new thing in the budget is the $120,000 in the sheriff's budget for the technology.
Correct.
Starting the fund, similar to MIS's fund, but specific to all their equipment. So that's a new start.
Yeah, so that's, I appreciate you pointing that out because that's, I mean, it's somewhat of ongoing, but is it going to be $120,000 every year or?
That's, that's, that was his best estimate this year as a, as a starting point. Is it going to be that every year? I don't know.
Thank you.
Probably going to take, you know, have to work with Rowan and whoever else.
So the, the other thing to say about the use of fund balance is, in all three major funds, the balance has been going up. And so there's been discussion about, you know, what, first of all, I mean, it's taxpayer dollars. And it doesn't, it doesn't serve the public well if those balances just keep growing and growing. I mean, at some point, you have to, you have to either use them or, you know, I mean.
I think the quote is, when is enough enough?
Right.
Or give it back.
Yeah. I guess not use it. That's the only choice.
Right, right. So, so, I mean, and, you know, we're, I mean, we're being transparent about that. We, we have these goals. We're trying to manage the county's finances responsibly. And we're trying to make sure that those balances don't exceed what they need to. And I think that, that's our shared goal as, as a board and I as administrator. I, I don't want to be sitting on a pile of money that's not doing anything, when it could be used for public good. So that's, that's why we're trying to apply some of that now. And, you know, to the, to the point of, you know, is, is that appropriate? And are these new positions appropriate? I mean, that's, that's a policy decision that you all have to make. So.
And do you think it's appropriate or? And this is a question for the board as well. That I differentiate the fund, the fund balances between general, highway, and PHHS? Like, I feel that's very appropriate, but others may disagree.
I disagree. And I, I like the separation. It helps me to, to view the overall budget. So I like the way that this is laid out.
And just for clarification, so Commissioner Hawkins, could you elaborate on kind of what your concerns are?
Yeah, that the general fund, we think is, ooh, just extra money we can use to fund new positions, new items.
Wait, who thinks that?
For the general fund, that that's the perception. That's what, but if it's in public health, it can only be used by public health. Well, I disagree, especially when you look at how much public health and human services has added to their fund balance over the last four years. It's because they didn't budget correctly as far as revenues and expenses. So they said it was going to cost this much for this service. Yay, it didn't cost that much. Yay for us. But that doesn't mean that, in my opinion, you get to take taxpayer dollars to fund new items going forward and not put that into, hey, that could have reduced, if we hadn't made that one go up that high, we could have used that for the general fund levy and added this position over here, maybe, because we had. It's a give and take between all funds and all departments. It's one levy.
Yeah.
And it's our job to make sure that it's distributed fairly.
Sure. I'd, I'd just like to respond, I mean, a big part of the savings in public health and human services has been a lower level of out-of-home placements than was anticipated. And to characterize that as not budgeting correctly, I mean, I think they have been budgeting correctly. I think there's been planning to, to try to avoid the number of out-of-home placements that, that we have to, to cover. And so, yes, I mean, that has been a reason why that balance has gone up. But I wouldn't say it's, to characterize it as incorrect budgeting, I think they budgeted very prudently, and we've seen in hindsight that we put too much there, and we do need to spend that down. I agree with that.
Commissioner Spalison?
Well, I think it'd be, I think it would be prudent to just have a, a quick conversation on the public health and human services and highway. The 165 in the general, we've just stated that basically that was put in to cover the $120,000 and some new positions and things that we've talked about. As I recall, on public health and human services, each year, it customary to put $200,000 of fund balance forward because of the way that the payments come in. You have to put that forward at the beginning of the year, and it comes back into the budget later on. In other words, you put $200,000 in there, but as I understood it, that was because of the, the timing and, and if you have issues at the beginning, like the first half of the year, that $200,000 has to cover that. Am I correct in that?
I don't believe so. Commissioner Mills?
But I remember, I've done it the last, this is the second year that we've put that forward.
We've budgeted it because they reduced their out-of-home placement budget because they haven't used it. So they reduced it and set aside $200,000 into the fund balance, saying, if something happens, we don't need to budget for, because we've been budgeting large amounts, so we're going to reduce it. But we're going to say, if something unforeseen happens, then we've got $200,000 out of fund balance.
Okay, I think we're saying, okay, it's just in.
But it's not as far as cash flow.
It doesn't a cash flow issue. Okay, thank you for that clarification. But, but that was one that we've been setting out, is $200,000. The additional $360,000 was what we had voted to, agreed to put forward towards the childcare. So that accounts for that one. The highway department, as I recall, when we looked at this and we looked at the, the amount of the inflationary effects on this, we used some of their fund balance to carry or cover those inflationary costs. And from my perspective at the time in that discussion, I was in agreement because, as you say, as you start to grow these and the numbers start to get large, and certainly well beyond what we set aside to maintain our bond ratings and other things, that seemed to me like a prudent use because we're seeing inflationary pressures that we haven't seen in over 40 years. Right, so we talked about, you know, that R-word that we don't like to hear, you know? But it's the same type of thing with inflation. And so is it the taxpayer's money? Of course it is. And you could, you could just put that in, you know, and say, well, the inflation drove these costs up for the highway department, so therefore, we're going to carry this through to the budget, or, you know, to the levy. That didn't seem prudent. Because generally, not always, but generally, inflationary items are transitory if the federal government attacks it with vigor to bring it back down. And it appears to me that that's the case. So I believe it's transitory. I believe it's a good use of, you know, again, you could say, that's, is that customary business expenses? It is when you have to buy the fuel and you have to buy the things that they have to to maintain the roads. However, you make that decision, am I going to add additional burden to the taxpayer at this time of high inflation? If I believe it's transitory, I would say it's a good use of the taxpayer's money to shield them from that additional expense. That, that was just my thinking. It doesn't mean it's right or wrong, just that was my mindset, I guess, when I went in there. Because when you look at these numbers and they, it's a big number, right, when you're going to use over a million dollars of fund balance, I think you have to adjudicate that. You have to talk about that openly and why you're doing it. Because it is unusual. You know, it's an unusual thing. And so now I think we're at that point, because I say, at the time we were doing it, made sense to me, but I think now's the right time, as we go to set this, to have that open discussion so that everybody understands, why would you make that kind of a decision when generally, in our discussions, whether it was with our employees for various things or with the public in general, normally we don't say, well, let's go to the fund balance, right, and spend that. And we don't because it's, it's the taxpayer's money, right? You have to be a little more judicious about that, and you really should have open, honest discussion like we are at this meeting. Just my thoughts.
And in examining other counties' budgets, and I've been watching them across the state, this is happening in other places. We are not in isolation at all.
No, it has to be, because as you see, if you take, if you were to take all of that out, the number would be, I think you said closer to 11% or over 11%. And those types of things create a different discussion. It would be, you're adding to our burden when we have the inflationary pressures, and now you're going to hit us with additional tax burden on top of that. So that's where, yes, we are elected to have that discussion, and, and we try as best we can to represent what we think is best for the general taxpayer in the, in the county. And I'm certain we'll get feedback from that. As we should.
Yes.
As we should.
Commissioner Mills?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, Commissioner Spalison. That really helped me, it really helped direct my, my thinking a little bit more and, and calm me down a little bit. Again, I, you know, the discussions we've had both with the PHHS budget as well as the highway budget, I felt like I had a pretty good grasp of, and I really appreciate you reiterating those reasons. It's just back to that general fund use, use of fund balance.
federal government attacks it with vigor to bring it back down. And it appears to me that that's the case. So, I believe it's transitory. I believe it's a good use of, you know, again, you could say, is that customary business expenses? It is when you have to buy the fuel and you have to buy the things that they have to to maintain the roads. However, you make that decision, am I going to add additional burden to the taxpayer at this time of high inflation? If I believe it's transitory, I would say it's a good use of the taxpayer's money to shield them from that additional expense. That was just my thinking. It doesn't mean it's right or wrong, just that was my mindset, I guess, when I went in there. Because when you look at these numbers and they, it's a big number, right, when you're going to use over a million dollars of fund balance, I think you have to adjudicate that. You have to talk about that openly and why you're doing it. Because it is unusual, you know? It's an unusual thing. And so, now I think we're at that point. Because I say, at the time we were doing it, made sense to me, but I think now's the great time, as we go to set this, to have that open discussion so that everybody understands why would you make that kind of a decision when generally, in our discussions, whether it was with our employees for various things or with the public in general, normally we don't say, well, let's go to the fund balance, right, and spend that. And we don't because it's the taxpayer's money, right? You have to be a little more judicious about that and you really should have open, honest discussion like we are at this meeting.
Well, and in examining other counties' budgets, and I've been watching them across the state, this is happening in other places. We are not in isolation at all.
No, it has to be because, as you see, if you were to take all of that out, the number would be, I think you said closer to 11% or over 11%. And those types of things create a different discussion. It would be, you're adding to our burden when we have the inflationary pressures and now you're going to hit us with additional tax burden on top of that. So, that's where, yes, we are elected to have that discussion and we try as best we can to represent what we think is best for the general taxpayer in the county. And I'm certain we'll get feedback from that. As we should.
Yes.
As we should.
Commissioner Mills.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Commissioner Swalson. That really helped me, really helped direct my thinking a little bit more and calm me down a little bit. Again, I, you know, the discussions we've had both with the PHHS budget as well as the highway budget, I felt like I had a pretty good grasp of and I really appreciate you reiterating those reasons. It's just back to that general fund use of fund balance.
That one is still open for discussion.
Yeah, I don't know that that's as transitory and that's where I'm less comfortable with.
Right.
So, and I certainly want to recognize the excess we have to our targets with fund balance and when is it appropriate to use it and when is it not? I keep waiting for the, what's the, is it the other shoe to drop or for it to start raining or some, you know, something? I keep waiting for, and we've so far fared fairly well, I think surprisingly well with our budget over these last three years, all the challenges that our community has faced. And so, like I said, I'm still waiting for things to get harder. So, that's why I'm not as comfortable using that fund balance now. But I'm talking a lot, so I'll be quiet.
Commissioner Storley.
Do you mean like the sky's falling? No, I don't think it is here. So, talking about money, capital reserves, you know, we've always said we need to set aside, I mean, we have 210,000 in holding. Is that enough? Is there something we can, you know, put a little bit more in for the coming year just to say it'll cover, you know, shingles or it'll cover something that needs to be done? Or how do you all feel about adding to the capital reserve?
Madam Chair, if I could, Commissioner Storley, so we are in the process of updating our capital improvement plan. And we're not going to have that plan until the end of the year. So, it's hard to say at this point how much is an appropriate level of funding to put toward that. I think where we are right now, my feeling is it's an appropriate amount. You know, if these recommendations in the CIP are for major new projects, which at this point I'm not anticipating, but, I mean, we know that we have some needs, for example, at the LEC and in this building, how those are going to be addressed is not yet clear. But, you know, it's possible that we might need a level of capital that is beyond what we have saved. And that's a bridge we'll have to cross when we get to it. I would not advocate adding more to the capital reserve fund at this point without having more information.
Thank you, appreciate that. Commissioner Hawkins.
So, I am curious how this, those plans, our CIP plans, and we know we have maintenance needs.
Yes, we do.
We also are in the process of a comp study and we're going to most likely have to adjust our wage scales. Just last month, talked about computer software and upgrades and making sure computers can talk to each other. That's not cheap. Where is that in this budget?
So, to respond to the comp study, we don't have anything in it for that. We have COLA budgeted, of course, cost of living adjustment, but we don't have anything budgeted for potential increases in wages. And that's a conversation that I think you all need to have to see if there's something today that you would want to add to this budget to, you know, have some contingency for that. But it's not something that's included currently.
And we haven't included those other two items anywhere in here either.
The other two being, I'm sorry.
Well, the, okay, the building is the $200,000.
Two thousand, right.
And that's it, okay? And we know that's not, that's going to be a drop in the bucket most likely, but, okay. And the computer software, do we have any idea? You were going to look into that?
Oh, so that's an ongoing discussion. I, you know, if we move forward on that, I don't see budgeting for that until '24. Because it's going to be, it's going to be a long process to figure out what our needs are and the best way to move forward on that. That's probably like an 18-month process.
Okay. So, I just went through, you know, all the new positions. I don't have numbers for everything here, so it's kind of hard to tell, but I got to 145,000, give or take, but there's two more positions in there that you need to add in. And then the engineering tech that I didn't understand either, so basically. But that's just the personnel cost. That's not the other stuff that we're buying. So, that's almost that whole, the use of fund balance. And those are costs that are going to continue to go on year after year after year. And they will rise. It's not going to be that this year. So, if you take that, if you don't use the fund balance except for the 200,000 for public health, yeah, we're down to 11%, but if next year we're not using fund balance, we're going to have a double-digit levy increase again. And I just don't think that's fair to taxpayers. We bought a $20,000 financial management plan and it was supposed to be able to plug in numbers. This is what it costs you this year. This is what it costs you next year. This is what it's going to cost you five years, thinking about inflation. I'd really like to see that laid out here, these numbers laid out there. What does it mean for the taxpayers of Cook County five years from now? Because I don't see some of these going away. We're asking the taxpayers of Cook County who are also struggling with their own personal budgets. We have households, half of the households in Cook County make less than $60,000 a year. The jobs in Cook County, the average is 48%, I think is what Jason said the other night at the meeting, 48% of the jobs pay $30,000 or less. But we're going to add a parks and trails director. Hey, that's a nice thing to have, but in the priority of right now that people are having problems paying their propane bills, heating their houses, paying their mortgage, mortgage rates are going up. We as a board need to think about the other people who are making this possible. Maybe we should be looking at our fees. Talk about the solid waste transfer station. Well, that's costing us quite a bit of money. Do we need to raise our fees to help cover that cost? So that somebody making $30,000 and struggling to pay their property taxes doesn't have to pay to subsidize somebody else's garbage? Ah, no, no. And I think we really need to look at all of our revenues and make sure we are accurately recording what it is we're bringing in and what we are actually spending. Thanks for letting me say that.
So, Auditor Powers, one question I had is, as we look over your long history, I'm going to tap into you as a historian. With your history with the county, we average a little bit more than what we're looking at here in our levy. Can you talk about kind of a 20-year average, 10-year average?
It's been in the 4.3, 4.4, when you take a year to year to year to year average over about 22 years. I didn't plug in last year's numbers or this year's yet.
All right.
But that's kind of where it's been, a little bit over 4.
Because I know we had that discussion last year when you were doing the budget, I believe it was Commissioner Mills that talked about looking not only at the specific year, but looking over a long period of time so that we're including things like inflation, recession, we're getting a better overall picture. In my look at other counties, you know, 6.9%, 7.1%, 8%, it's kind of all over the map. I think we are looking overall at a very reasonable situation, given inflation and given the potential, I'll say the R-word, recession. We're all feeling the impact of inflation, every one of us, you know, whether it's gas prices or paying your mortgage or putting food on your table. But I also would say that the services that are being provided and positions that are being added are for the benefit of the taxpayers. And as we've grown in population, based on the last census, we have more people here which require more services. And so, I want us to not lose sight of that as well. Commissioner Mills.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Hawkins reminded me of something that, it's funny, it was out of my mind because it's often on my mind. Commissioners' salaries is less than 30,000 a year. We also pay property taxes, which are going up. We also are affected by inflation, which is significant. And whereas I greatly appreciate a nominal increase because I think that's important every year for these positions and any position, I don't think it adequately addresses commissioner's salaries. And maybe that's easy for me to say as I don't have anyone running against me, but I have said it many times before and maybe that's why nobody is running against me is because you hardly can afford it. You can hardly afford to be a commissioner unless you're semi-retired or independent wealthy or whatever. And it really restricts who can run. And I want to make sure that we can get as good a candidates as possible. Not saying we aren't a great board because we are and I'm very happy, but this isn't about you, it's not about me, this is about the organization, our community and the long-term vision and effects. So, in the past, I've given a suggestion of $12,000 more. That was based on, and that's per commissioner, that was based on the amount that was set and then that average inflation every year to last year. Surprise, surprise, this year it's more than that by a tune of 7%. So, I would like to address that in some form or another, and I know it's very difficult. There's multiple ways to do that, whether it be salaries or per diems or a combination of both. But I just want to know what people think and what people's reactions are to those numbers and those thoughts. I certainly recognize it's much more difficult to do that this year versus last year when we had a lower number last year as far as the levy increase was concerned, but it's never easy. It's never easy to have this conversation. I pushed for it last year, I'm pushing for it again this year. And I'll push for it as long as I need to, I guess. But just, and so, stop that. And another thought I had, as far as, and I greatly appreciate the point about financial management plan, that's something I would also like to review. And I was just hoping Brady could give me a little more insight, maybe on the spot here, but just in that financial management plan, I remembered a suggested expected levy increase. And there was a range. Do you recall what that range was?
It was in the 4. I don't remember exactly, but.
My memory was 3% to 6% as a range, but I don't know that now.
We changed it in more than one of the iterations, but it was in that 3 to 4 something. But the other thing I'd say about that is, yeah, we should update that, but the capital improvement plan is key, absolutely key to that. That's the, it's probably the, I mean, other than, you know, wages and employees, that's key to that. So, we need that, so I'd say that'd be a goal for next year. We'll have that and it'll give you at least a different plan for long-term. You'll have the dollar amount for maintenance and then you've got the, you know, what are the options for, if you need to, you know, issue bonds and things like that. At least you'll have a much better plan for that than you had.
Well, thank you. And where I was going with that was that last year, when we kept our levies, in my opinion, too low, it's almost as if we're having to make up for that this year. If we do that again this year, what do you suppose that means for next year? And on and on. And that's how these things get out of control. And so, I strongly urge the board to address things now, not putting that burden down the road as much, just bit by bit, if we can make progress, I think that's our best long-term solution.
And I would agree with you on that, Commissioner Mills. As I've looked at the numbers and I know how hard Administrator Yorki and Auditor Powers have worked on the budget.
And the department heads.
And absolutely all of the department heads. And all the conversations that we've had, I would like to, and I'm going to just toss out a number right now, I would like to look at 5% as a preliminary levy so that we can get more information, we'll have more inflationary data, we can look at the Consumer Price Index and follow that, look at possibilities of a recession, but I would rather pad it than come up short. That's my thought. Commissioner Storley.
Madam Chair, thank you. Well, when I came in, the can had been kicked down the road for many years and that's why we faced huge double digits. And it's taken us all these years to sort through all that, up until I would say a couple of years ago. And so, now I agree with you, Commissioner Mills, that we need to be realistic for the coming years. Well, one year for sure, one year at a time, because that's how we operate here, one year at a time, in looking at everything that we have here for our levy. So, I was also thinking around 4, 9, or 5.
Thank you. Commissioner Swalson.
I support when you put a number, you proposed 5. That's as good a number as any. Because I look at the pieces from the inflationary perspective, but more importantly, the conversation about the pay study, there's going to be something that comes from that. I believe that to be true and certainly in our discussions with employees and their, because they do their own comparisons when they look out in the rest, you know, the rest of the world and what others get paid. So, I think there will be adjustments to be made and I think it'd be irresponsible of us to not have something set there to pick that up, you know, as we go into that. And then, I guess my view on a larger number, I think I go back to my earlier discussion. It's here. As we said, if you took out the use of the fund balance this year, we would be looking at 11% or more. So, I think realistically, the numbers here, it's how we're addressing it. And we have decided to use, or at least up to this point, we had decided to utilize, we have to make that decision again as we propose this, the use of some fund balance to try to move us through this. But to do that, you really have to stop and think it's because of the inflationary pressures. And that's where the challenge of some of this, some of this, and that's why I'm acknowledging, some of this is not. And so, again, you know, each of us has to make that decision now as we look at this to say, is this the right use now and is it being addressed in the proper way, through fund balance or through levy change? I am, excuse me, I am sensitive, as you say, that there is a struggle going on right now in the day-to-day, people out working, trying to make ends meet. I get that. And that's the only reason why with, like, you know, the highway department and this type of thing, that I think that's okay to use that, but the challenge is appropriate, absolutely appropriate, that if you've got ongoing things and it's just going to be there the next year and the next year. Granted, I think our administrator said, at what point do you say, you know, I think you said, Commissioner, when do we give back? We are. You're giving back to the taxpayer through the use of their money, fund balance. You are giving back to the taxpayer through this mechanism. Now, the question is, you can challenge, is it appropriate? You said adding a position or these types of things. If we want to challenge those, then we should challenge those directly. Right? I mean, that's okay and that's appropriate to put it out on the table, to have that challenge and that discussion. I'm just proposing that use of fund balance, when you say giving back, there's ways to do that. You can write a check to every taxpayer, you know, property taxpayer in Cook County. You could do such a thing. Do I propose that? Nope, I don't. Because there is going to come a time when we're going to Because there is gonna come a time when we're gonna need those funds. We know that. Or you can do it in this fashion, but don't, don't think that you're not doing something or giving back, because effectively, like with the Highway Department, we're doing just that, with the belief that this is transitory and it's going to come back down. And so it was a good use. And only time will decide whether we're right or whether we're not. You know, with the Highway Department use, i- is what I'm stating. But I, I do, I do agree it would not be appropriate to, if this is what the number is today with the use of fund balance and everything else, that's not enough, because we haven't factored in particularly the pay, you know, our pay study. We've gone through all the effort. You, you should have something sitting there. Otherwise, if you didn't think pays were gonna change, why'd you do the study in the first place? Right? So.
We also still have some unknowns, um, thinking about Pilt. Um, and maybe Auditor Powers you want to, or I see Assessor Thompson out there. Um, talk a little bit about where we're at with that, because that is an ongoing, moving target.
Madam Chair, I actually met with Assessor Thompson yesterday, and we talked about possibly putting that on the agenda for next week's Committee of the Whole meeting.
Great.
So.
Wonderful.
Great.
That would be helpful.
Yeah, it's, it's not a current, uh, let's say, budget issue. We've kinda, we've come to terms with this status quo, how we're managing it right now. And it's, it's just, it's a potential positive, let's say, if something changes, which you'll hear about next week.
Okay. Thank you, thank you. Commissioner Hawkins.
I would just like to mention that, um, this whole list of items that are new to our budget, I get, you know, providing more services. But at some point, it isn't just, we have to do this. We can say no. That's, that's our job. We could say, no, not yet. Hey, put this off for a year. We don't have to spend all of that fund balance on new things this year. The choice isn't a five percent preliminary levy. We could still go with the original levy and say, you know what? We're gonna have to prioritize this list. We can't do it all this year. That's another option.
Commissioner Mills.
Yeah, that's, that's a really good point. Um, and, you know, just where I'm, where I'm at or coming from is that, uh, and much to Commissioner Starly's point, um, that has been done in the past, putting, putting things off, and it does add up. And it's not like everyone's just, all the new items are not just, hey, let's, let's, uh, what else could we use? It's, it's real needs that are brought forward by department heads and committees, um, that, that see these needs in our community. And it's our job to, yes, weigh whether or not now is the time, uh, if, if, uh, we can partially meet them, or if we can really address, address them. And I would argue, our money is best spent when we proactively address issues, not waiting until, whoa, we gotta do something now. If we can think ahead, plan ahead, look ahead, see what issues there are and how they may affect, have a ripple effect or affect our community at large, I think it's most responsible to try to address those, dip them in the bud, so to speak. Um, and so that's, that's kinda where I'm, where I'm coming from. And I'm sorry, I don't think five percent is enough when we're talking our preliminary budget. If we were setting our final levy right now, I would, I'd be very happy with a four percent. But I see enough uncertainty, and I wanna have enough wiggle room based on previous years, based on the financial management plan suggestions, based on the, the real number without using fund balance. You know, try to think about, okay, financial management plan, three to six percent. Or if we didn't use fund balance, eleven percent. Uh, if, if we don't wanna have all these costs, as Commissioner Hawkins so rightly points out, hit us next year. If we go in the middle of those two, that gives us room, and we can whittle that down before the final levy. That's pretty radical, I know, but I, I would strongly urge us to go higher than five percent, uh, as a preliminary, um, more on the tune of at least six percent. But if we were to take that average, I think, I think it would, um, give us more space. But it'd also give us a lot more public comment, too. And need to explain the strategy there, and, and that's something I enjoy doing, but, uh, but it's a burden, so. Oh, that reminds me. I stopped the conversation about commissioner salary. Where, where do, where do people, where are we sitting with that? As I said, I will continue to push that, um, but it's, it's something that I think we really need to discuss. We have had a Committee of the Whole, uh, discussion about it. Uh, we have, I have brought it up at prior meetings. Um, we have had some ideas. Um, and I just, I'd just like to know where, where people sit there, what they see as realistic, uh, what they see, uh, the duties of the role, uh, requiring of us and, and our time, and, and just what's, what's fair there.
I can say that, um, it is very challenging for me to meet my monthly budget based on my commissioner salary. I have not taken social security yet. Um, I am thinking about it all the time, because it's a struggle. You know, I'm paying a high percentage of my income for my mortgage and my food. So I get it.
Thank you for saying that. Do you have any more specifics on where we might, how we might address that?
I think it is something that we should take a look at, um, and I would support, you know, further discussion of it. Commissioner Stolson.
Yeah, and the only thing I like to look out, because I, I don't know, I recognize the day-to-day challenges, that, but at the same time, just like with our pay study that we're doing, we base that on something. And when we did our comparison across the various counties, and you looked at counties our size and even bigger, and looked at where we all sat with that, um, it didn't, it didn't point to we should be getting a larger pay raise like that. And, and that to me, I, I guess I, I always want to be able to say it's based on something specific out here that shows that that's a fair compensation for the, the duties that are there. That, that was where I kind of left that at the time. You know, I'm not, not saying that to live up here doesn't cost more. I recognize that, but, so, I, I guess it's, if we're, if we're gonna have it, and I, again, I think it is going to be an issue that will be a continued discussion. But I wanna make sure it's grounded in some type of analysis of a pay study. And that, that really, when you look at this unique, you know, position, it's easy to get the data, and you lay it out, and then you have to justify why it should be different than what you would see in these other counties.
As far as the grounding is concerned, if I may, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Stolson, that, that really helps me, um, understand where you're coming from. But as far as the grounding is concerned, how, how does it sit with you, looking at when the commissioners twenty-some years ago set, uh, gave themselves significant increases, and then following the, that, uh, cost of inflation?
Well, to respond, I, I would, again, you're right. You have to look at those pressures that are on there. But I think those will be carried throughout the counties in the state. And so as you get new data coming into the new year, I think that'd be appropriate to go out to AMC, because I think every county will be looking at the same things. I don't think you're going to see them sitting there stagnant with the challenges that are out there in the economy. And, and you may have a very good basis there. You know, I, I'm not, I, I don't know it for a fact, but I think we will see changes in those. Some are built right in. I think in some counties, they build in those types of things to give de-escalations, so. I think it's appropriate. Do we wanna have a higher one than this? I, I would tell you, my view, um, as you say, you, you offered up a six percent. I don't have a real basis to say that that's more appropriate than five. I guess I'm just wired, because of my business experience, to say, we're offering three point nine five. Go to five. Take on those challenges. You don't want it to be as high, or you wanna ba- have the money spent on something else? There's your opportunity right there. Things have been offered up. If you wanna challenge it, you wanna go, you know, bring it in and use the money and prioritize and do those as the challenge has been put forward. I think people work better in making decisions on this when you have to prioritize on what you're going to spend. And so I'd rather set it at a number like five, knowing that you're banking up the rest in a fund balance, you know? And Rick, keeping that in mind as you go forward, to not just continue to add, because you know, next year, the number could certainly be higher, if we let it continue on. That's my only thought of it. I, I would rather challenge ourselves to look at those things and bring that in. I think we did a great job with that last year. I mean, we all talk about the, we all talk about, well, we got this grant back to Public Health and Human Services, and that was a challenge that was brought forward. Why isn't that being put in there and bringing this down? But we did keep the number low, and we did challenge ourselves to spend appropriately. If we've got not a control, or we think we have, or there's that perception, we should address that. But don't set the number too high. Put it down at a challenging number, and go challenge ourselves to bring that, within that parameter. Just a thought.
Commissioner Mills.
I think that if we set a, a low preliminary, um, budget, that it will, um, get used up almost immediately by the comp study. And, um, and then our hands will be tied again. And that's, I think, a poor way to set a final levy, is to have your hands tied. I think it's very important to set yourselves up for possibilities. I certainly appreciate, um, people working under pressure and that challenge. But more than that, I wanna make sure that, um, us commissioners, our staff, our partners have the support they need. And the best way that, that we can give that is if we are enabled, if we are able to, to address the needs. Um, so I'm, I'm still less than comfortable with five, um, percent. Uh, again, if they were talking final levy, I would be whooping, and, um, and same with the, the proposed budget here. But I just see that things are coming, and we need to be prepared and able to address them.
I appreciate those remarks. Commissioner Starly, what are your thoughts?
I think the public appreciates when we really work through items such as new hires, new areas coming in. All the departments have done a great job in what they've presented here. And, um, but there's really no easy answer, other than put our nose to the grindstone and work things through that are already here. We aren't inventing anything new right now. Maybe January first, we will. Not right now. So, um, I don't know. I see Commissioner Mills' point. Um, but yet I don't wanna go too high, because then it's like, well, we'll just slip all this other stuff in, too, and it'll be no problem.
Right.
So, um, I'm kinda at the half, five and a half.
Commissioner Mills.
Thank you, and that's very reasonable, Commissioner Starly. Um, and I, I too have been asking a little bit around and didn't get as many answers as I was hoping for from, from, uh, other counties. But the preliminaries that Carlton County is looking at is a seven percent. The preliminary that Aiken County is looking at is sixteen percent. Preliminary St. Louis County is looking at is five percent. Neither Lake nor Koochiching County yet had, uh, preliminary numbers to share with me. But the Koochiching jail proposal comes in at seventeen to twenty million dollars. So, and that's not necessarily gonna start with this levy, this, this budget cycle, but it gives some perspective on, on where things are at for, for our neighbors and, and colleagues.
And you and I did very similar research, Commissioner Mills. Um, I've got those same types of figures, looking at similar counties and neighboring counties. And, um, you know, given that, um, I am of a thought that we could go a little higher than my originally proposed five percent for a preliminary. But I like the idea of looking at all those items very seriously.
Um, just out of curiosity, and again, putting, putting people on the spot potentially, or, or maybe doing some quick figuring for my slow head. Um, what would the, the levy be, uh, about if we did not include the use of fund balance from the general fund? Roughly, don't need to.
My computer's misbehaving right now. Apologies.
Five point two.
Yeah? Really? Oh.
It's my swag.
But the use of fund balance in Public Health and Human Services is for a position also.
Correct. Good point.
Well, you're correct. The three hundred and sixty thousand.
Right. That includes.
Included that.
So that would be an ongoing expense?
Very good point.
No.
We said it was a one year.
Wow, yeah.
We, we, we capped, we did in fact, cap that at one year. That it would, you, you could not use fund balance beyond the first year.
Which would be an ongoing expense, 'cause we didn't talk about making that position a contract one-year position. It's, it was going to be a continuing position.
Five point four five.
Oh, gosh.
It was general fund, yeah.
All right. So that's.
Point four five.
Pretty good.
Close to five point five.
And that, that does point to five point five. I'd argue with the wiggle, that I think is important. Um, it pushes it to six, which still, I'm not, I, I, I see next year being a harder year yet. Last year, I saw this year being harder because of how low we kept it. Next year, I see it being harder because of what we're doing this year. It's just connecting future dots. Um, and that's, that's hard, and the future's not set by any means, but I'm just getting a feel of, this is my fourth year doing this, right? And just trying to get a feel of how this works. I'm sure Commissioner Starly has even better feel for how this works. Um, and, and so I just don't wanna, don't wanna hamstring us for, for, uh, our final.
Given, I mean, given the discussion here, I don't see, even if you set it at six or something, that this board's just gonna, oh, well, there's room there.
Right.
You're gonna have.
Come to find.
You're gonna have a hard discussion regardless of where you set it.
Commissioner Hawkins.
I'll also point out that, um, there are revenues that we.
Yeah.
Have, for some reason, I don't know, I guess we'll have to have a good explanation of, this is what we brought in this year, but we're projecting half that amount for next year. Why? Um, so that, those are those detailed questions.
Mm-hmm.
Which I wouldn't go back to, that's why we had large increases to fund balance on those years that we had double-digit levy increases. Yeah, because we didn't budget correctly. Um, we said we needed a seventeen percent, but then we added large amounts to fund balance instead.
Commissioner Mills.
Commissioner Hawkins is absolutely right. I just wanna point out that a large part of that reason was to increase our bond rating, right, because it's, my understanding is because it's much cheaper to borrow money if you have a larger fund balance. And that's saving money in, in that bigger picture side of things. Oh, and there was something else I was gonna say. Commissioner Hawkins, you have such great points. What was the first thing you said?
Oh, we forgot.
Dah!
Rewind. So if we were to.
There you go, I got it.
Auditor Powers at a six percent preliminary, what would we be looking at as our contingency? With five percent, we figured a hundred and sixteen thousand. Let's, let him do the math.
All right, all right.
I need quiet when I do math as well.
Shh. I'm not doing it.
I should've brought my spreadsheet. I left it on the air.
About two hundred and twenty-five thousand.
All right.
That's six percent?
Six percent.
Two twenty-six, to be exact.
Commissioner Mills.
That, for the year 2023, I think that gives us enough wiggle room to be able to navigate things. I'm just not. I'm just not, again, I think for 2024, we're pushing some things off because of those ongoing costs. The thing that I forgot that Commissioner Hawkins brought up, that I thought was such a great point, was our revenues. There are opportunities to both increase our revenues, as well as to more finely tune that budgeting process. And I think that's worthwhile looking into. That being said, many of them are not guaranteed. It's something that either is hopeful or possible, and so it's difficult to budget. But to your point about the discrepancy between, say, this year's revenues or last year's revenues and next year's budgeted revenues, I think that's worth looking into to try to hone in our final levy for sure. So, but, but yeah, there's some other exciting, I think, opportunities that, again, with the proper support, staff will be able to pursue. And that's largely how the PHH staff was able to pursue some of that more longer-term funding opportunities is through that investment. So, gets really complicated, and don't look to me to explain it all, but.
And I'd just like to say that I get, a budget is your best guess. And I see using fund balance because, hey, we expected to get $100,000 in fees this year, but guess what? Something happened, it didn't happen. We only got 80. That's what fund balance is for. And then you adjust next year. But we should be more, when you can look back for four years in a row and say, huh, every time we're 65, 85% over what we thought we were going to bring in. Well, then it's time to next year saying, we probably could account for that, and then we don't have to use so much of our fund balance, or raise the levy so much.
Well, and it would be interesting to kind of analyze this also through the view of COVID. We've had money come in to our community in a variety of ways, and this hasn't happened before. And so our analysis of the picture over the last four years has to be a really cautious one, and I think should involve looking at other places and looking at their use of dollars and what it's done to fund balance and things of that nature, so that we're looking at a very clear picture and making our best guess when we establish our budget.
Commissioner Mills.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Do we have a snapshot of our current fund balance, the general fund?
Not the current.
Okay.
But.
For the last.
The cash, the cash balance is pointed in a very positive direction. I should have one at your next meeting. No, I reported that a couple of times, so it's.
I think it was March last you did that.
Yeah, I expect a pretty positive.
Yeah. I'm just trying to weigh current and versus the use of fund balance. Again, if we don't have that right now, I would ask that we give that cushion so that, but to Brady's words, it is positive, so maybe I should just be comfortable with it. I'm sorry. Just not.
I would say, given our finances, our discussion here, and what our neighbors are coming in at 6.97%, 5.97%, 8%, that considering a preliminary at 6% isn't, is reasonable. Because we know we can't raise it. We can just lower it. And we can lower it through looking carefully at all of our programs, our positions. So I guess, Commissioner Mills, I'd be willing to support that.
I'm sure I'd like to make a motion to set our preliminary levy at 6%.
We have a motion, is there support? I'll support that. Any further discussion?
That was a hard support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion fails. So let's continue our discussion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to set the preliminary levy at 5.9%.
We have a motion, is there support? Sounds like a repeat of last year. I support. Further discussion? Commissioner Mills.
Madam Chair, I'd ask the members of the board in opposition of the previous motion to give some further inclination of what number they're comfortable with.
Commissioner Solsen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I really believe we should be setting something more challenging, 5.5, I think is a good number. I think, I think we, if we don't do something more challenging, we're not gonna send the proper signal to the public that we're going to go look at these things, we're going to go find ways to, you know, not saying we won't do things, but we may not do them now. Right? I mean, you gotta, you gotta set a challenge out there for the organization, and, yeah, that's just where my mind's at. So I'm still kinda, I was perfectly happy with five, but the conversations brought me to 5.5.
I'm still at five. Never brought me along yet.
That's fine.
So you're at five, 5.5. Commissioner Starley.
5.5.
Well.
But we do have a motion and a second.
Yes, we do. Commissioner Mills.
I would just point out that I think it's important, when we have communications with the public, that, yes, there is a certain amount of reading into things, but it's our job to clearly communicate what our intentions are and why they are. And Commissioner Solsen, I do appreciate that you've very clearly laid out your intentions of challenging the board and our staff to keep things low. But I'd say we have plenty of challenges, and that it includes the challenges that you're suggesting. And I just want to make sure we have enough support for the things that are coming down. I mean, when we talk about a 5%, and, you know, I'm just shooting from the hip here, I just am saying that the comp study will eat that up in an instant. Then what? You know?
And you decide the things you aren't going to do. And that's okay.
Sure.
You have to be willing to say, there are some things, they may get done, but they won't get done now.
Right. And that's what I'm saying other boards were pretty good at. They're not happening now, but they might later. And what I'm saying is, I'm tired of that. I think this board needs to be aggressive in addressing our community needs, and I think it needs bold leadership. If there's a difficult conversation out in the community about, why did you go to 5.9% instead of 5.5? You can say, hey, we need to be able to address the needs as they come. And those needs were clearly identified in our lower suggested levy, and without having that ability to move, we can't address. Unless we budget for it, we cannot address our community needs.
Commissioner Solsen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I believe our communities' needs are not progressive right now. I believe our communities' needs are their day-to-day expenses. We're about to add to that day-to-day expense. Stop it. Hold the line. 5.5 isn't a low number. It's incumbent on us to do those challenges. You gotta set a limit somewhere. You just have to, and we are using, you know, I can have that conversation with anyone with the ability to give, and that we are doing, in fund balance use. It is not something we generally do. It is extraordinary. It needs to be seen as extraordinary. We're trying to help them. Don't add on the other end and negate what you're trying to do on this, you know, with the use of fund balance, because the two start to oppose one another in the general thinking. You see what I mean? That's where I'm at.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you for those comments. Commissioner Mills.
Madam Chair, and thank you, Commissioner Solsen, for that explanation. I just, it seems like, and I do not mean any disrespect by any means to any past boards, our current board, anyone, it seems like it is easy and shortsighted to address immediate day-to-day needs by cutting taxes. That is not a long-term way to address those needs. And that's what I'm looking for, is the long haul here. And I guess that's progressive, but that's the only way I see us making any progress. So, but, you know, you're absolutely right, 5.5 is not low. And again, this is preliminary. I very much hope that when we get to that final, it's going to be less than what was in our packet, but that really depends on many things, including PILT and the comp study, and, you know, whatever else comes our way.
I do, Madam Chair. So James, when do you think we would be able to have the comp study? In the next month?
So Leah's trying to get ahold of Tessa to get an estimate of that. We talked about that yesterday, and I'm not sure if she was able to talk to Tessa yesterday, so I don't have that information now. My understanding was, once we had selected the benchmarks that we were going to use, that the process of actually getting the data from the comparable counties was going to be pretty quick, like on the order of two, three weeks. But we haven't gotten that back yet. So we're asking for that, and should have a better idea here in the next few days.
Okay.
But I fully expect that, I mean, this will be concluded before you all have to set the final levy. Let me rephrase that. We'll make sure it is.
Thank you.
Good save.
All right. Any further discussion? So, Commissioner Hawkins.
Just a clarification, I guess. Can we get the management plan with current, I get, it's not going to have our actual billing needs in it, but it's going to show our personnel costs and those things going forward, so we can see that on a spreadsheet.
I'll defer to Brady on that. I mean, obviously, it won't, I mean, if you're wanting that before the end of the year, it wouldn't, it wouldn't include CIP.
Right. I get that, or we can, we can say, hey, we know the new roof is gonna cost, we think, 200,000 or what?
Yeah, I have no doubt you could do something. I don't know what the value of it is without the CIP.
I think it helps some commissioners look ahead. What's the levy gonna be next year to pay for that?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It would be very helpful to have just that, granted outdated data, but it would give some good perspective, I think.
So I know the last time we developed that, Ellers took the lead on it, and I'm just wondering about our capacity to do that in-house, Brady. Is that something that we can do? Do we need outside help with it?
Oh, the audit's done now.
Almost, almost.
Almost.
We could take a crack at it.
Yeah.
Commissioner Solsen.
When the board, Madam Chair, we have a motion and a second on the table, 5.9%.
Any further discussion? We've got a lot. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion fails. Given our discussion, is there another motion? Commissioner Solsen.
Madam Chair, I will boldly venture a 5.5% cap for levy increase 2023.
Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Starley. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? Commissioner Mills.
Given our current situation, I'm curious if other commissioners have any reflection on last year's levy?
Yeah. Did you look at the quarter two report? We're doing really, really well. I'm thinking we didn't even need to go that high.
Correct.
Last year.
If you look at our fund, if you look at our cash balance and everything else, you would say that we set it too high.
I apologize. I said current. That included what our projected needs are, that we currently see.
But other than inflationary pressures and things, those were things that we decided.
Yeah.
They weren't outside of our control. And so, we, I think the challenge is appropriate. You have to make hard decisions, and we should do that. That's my reflection, looking back.
I see two big numbers, comp study, capital improvement plan. We're not planning for those now. It's gonna hurt even more later.
But I do see that we are, I mean, with the capital reserve, is it enough? Always. It's not enough, but it is not a small number either. And when you get your CIP, you, the capital, pardon me, capital improvement plan, again, you draw a line. These are always an iterative process. So you will look at this, you will look at what's available, and you will draw a line, and you will say, is that the right things, right? Or should I move something up and something down? And then you can decide if you need more, right? But you're never going to try to bite off the whole thing, or be too aggressive in doing it, because, well, as you say, we'd just be putting way too much burden on the taxpayer to try to do that.
That's what I'm saying about now.
Yeah.
Is we're trying to take little bites.
And it's not that we don't have a general sense of what that is, but in the discussion we held earlier, I didn't hear a challenge to our administrator when we talked about the 210,000, other than from Commissioner Starley. She looked at that and said, doesn't look like it's nearly enough, right? But the rest of us were silent.
Silence does not mean consent.
Agreed. But in the discussion to raise, to go to a six or to a higher number, it wasn't pointed at that.
May I point at it now?
Well, certainly, but.
Commissioner, or not Commissioner. Administrator York.
You been promoted or something?
One more time.
So, I, first of all, I just want to acknowledge the really great discussion that you guys are having about this. It's, you're bringing up great points. I appreciate the tone of it. It's respectful. It's the way we should be doing the public's business, so thank you for that. From my perspective, you know, we presented the first look at the budget at the end of July, and since then, I've not gotten any feedback about things that people feel need to go away. And so I would just ask that we not wait until December 13th to have the conversation about, okay, what needs to, you know, what do we need to change? I would, I really want your direction on what adjustments you think need to be made. And the sooner we can start having that conversation, the better off we're all gonna be. So that's my only request.
And I can say, what's interesting to me is, this year, I have had very little feedback regarding the preliminary budget compared to last year. I don't know if other issues and concerns are in the mind of the public, but it's been significantly less. How about for other commissioners?
Haven't, no?
You're saying ahead of the preliminary?
Yeah.
Let's say, for me, it's about on par.
Yeah.
I would say I normally get more after the preliminary.
I have a feeling that over the last year, there's so many things that have arisen in the community concerns that really aren't the board concerns right now. And in the future, I think we will be a participant in some of those concerns. The Coast Guard station closing down, ambulance drivers.
Yeah. There's a lot on our citizens' minds.
It is.
People are just trying to get by, and it's really hard for people to participate when they're struggling, just to.
they're struggling, just to make ends meet, commissioners included.
And I guess, to that point, then, when we know, we're talking five and a half percent levy increase here, thinking about what our hospital is going to do, what our school is going to do, what the other taxing entities are doing, and it all comes down to the same person paying them all.
That's correct.
So, we have to factor that in. So, while I totally respect your passion for the Parks and Trails Director position at $58,000 or whatever, really? Is that priority this year? Or, you know what? Let's, let's let the hospital figure out how to pay their workers so we don't, my friends don't have to send their parent down to Two Harbors because there's empty beds up here they can't staff. You have to think about the needs of not just us and this staff, but the needs of the taxpayers putting the bill for everything we need in this.
Commissioner Mills?
I, I have the privilege of representing the county board, the hospital board meetings, and I happen to know that their two biggest concerns are housing and childcare, and we are doing that. And that's the type of leadership that I think we need. We need to have that comprehensive community vision and really identify the needs of our partners and the challenges. The same is true at the school, um, housing and childcare. People can hire people, they just can't find a place to live, and if they could find a place to live, they don't have a place for their kids to land. So, I feel like we are, we do have that in mind. When it comes to the dollars, though, I really want to point fingers to the state and the feds. There's a lot.
There's a lot of work that hasn't been done.
There's a lot.
This would be easier if the legislature had done their work. But they didn't, and we're left with it. We're not getting the money back to Cook County like we should, but we're have to deal with it. But speaking to the housing, really? Housing's number one issue. It's number one priority on this budget.
Agreed.
And that's what I want to say. Let's focus on housing first. These are other things, nice. Some of them can be put off for a while. We need to spend money and energy working on housing because then some of these other things are going to solve themselves or make it easier, really. So, no, I'm still, I'm still at 5%, and let's focus on what we actually need right now. Needs versus wants.
Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Commissioner Mills?
Madam Chair, just, just to justify my, my thoughts as far as needs and wants, again, it's, it's looking ahead. It's, it's looking at what our community has needed, where, where things have been recently and where they're going, that I see, um, the, uh, the real need of these new items. It's all connected, and, and if we're, if we're addressing only one thing, you're not seeing the whole picture. You really got to look at the everything and try to, you know, shuffle things around, move things around, and, uh, yeah, we got to be able to walk and chew gum at the same time. I don't like gum. I have no more.
I didn't say anything. I just glanced in your direction. But, given that, um, any further discussion? All in favor of a 5.5% preliminary levy? Say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. We did it.
My gosh. Are we actually moving on?
He must be, you have other items on the agenda.
I do.
Hopefully, they will not take quite as long.
Let me reorient myself quickly here. Okay, so, some happier things to think about.
Yes.
Item B, under my section, is regarding a donation that the Cook County Amateur Hockey Association is proposing to make to the county for the purchase of a Zamboni ice resurfacer for the ice rink at the community center. We, as you know, we had a Zamboni previously. It was from the early 60s. It, uh, was not in good shape, and we actually reached a point where we could no longer source the parts needed to do repairs on it, so, um, so it had to be replaced. And we did a lot of Diane before she, before she left, and more recently Sarah, and also Matt Stone with the Hockey Association, um, have done a lot of research on what's available out there. New Zambonis are north of $100,000. We know we're not doing that. But we were able to identify a good used machine in the $23,000 range. So, so this donation will offset the majority of that cost, and so the request here is to, uh, accept the donation from the Amateur Hockey Association.
It's kind of nice being provided some funds after our recent discussion. Any questions for Administrator Yorki? Any comments? Commissioner Mills?
I want to thank the, the Hockey Association for, uh, their patience, both with the construction of the warming house and now here with the potential purchase of the Zamboni machine. I know it's been a very frustrating process. It's really good to see the new energy that's, that's brought into the community with some new players, and, um, I'm just really grateful for, for their advocacy and work, um, in our community.
Other questions or comments? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve or accept the donation.
Make the motion.
That is a tough one.
Nope.
All right. We have a motion. Do we have support?
Support.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? All right. Donation accepted, $18,497 and 48 cents.
Very good. Thank you, Board. Um, the next item regards the purchase of a Zamboni. Um, again, the delivered cost of this is $23,000, so we would be using a little bit more than $4,500 in levy funding. These are funds that have been budgeted, and, um, we did have a, Brady, were you able to determine what the, what the balance in that account was?
12,000.
It was 12. Okay. So, so the agenda items, that's $6,000. So, I just want to correct that to $12,000. So, that would take that balance down to about $7,500. And so, that's, that's the request, is to proceed with the purchase of this piece of equipment.
Any questions? I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
All right. We have a motion to approve the purchase of that reconditioned Zamboni. Is there a second?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Storley. We have a motion and support. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
All right. Thank you very much. Um, under other items, I just wanted to address the recent broadband outage that we had a couple of weeks ago. Um, it was Friday, August 26th, and, um, it was pretty disruptive. So, um, Rowan Watkins, our director of MIS, could not be here today, but he did prepare some written comments that I'd like to read regarding the incident and what occurred and what we're doing about it. So, Rowan writes, "Good morning, Commissioners, colleagues, and members of the public. As you're aware, on Friday, August 26th, we experienced a widespread disruption of internet and cell phone service throughout the county. The outage, with few exceptions, lasted approximately six hours. I'd like to take this opportunity to offer some details and clarifying points related to the outage and the work being done to address the issues it exposed. Firstly, I'd like to begin with the cause. A contractor working outside of Cook County bored through a major fiber optic line located between Silver Bay and Highway 1. There are processes and even state statutes in place to make sure this type of incident doesn't occur. I can't highlight enough the importance of following these processes. The potential for negative consequences is extremely high, and it's the law. The location of this fiber cut did expose a weakness in the redundant routing system Northeast Service Co-op has in place. This weakness was specific to this area and segment of fiber. We've had similar incidents in the past that took place in other locations, and those incidents, and in those incidents, all or most services rolled over to a redundant fiber path as intended. Specific to this incident, while some Northeast Service Co-op services did roll over to a redundant path, including phone and internet service, at the Cook County Courthouse, Law Enforcement Center, and Highway Department, True North Services, which is residential and other business service, did not. Because True North provides internet and phone services to many residents and businesses, as well as the required backhaul connections to the majority of cell sites in Cook County, this disruption was, um, let me back up. This disruption in service was very widespread. With the reason for True North Services not rolling over to a redundant path coming from a routing issue and not a lack of infrastructure, the solution is easier than it might otherwise be. NESC expects to have this diverse path solution in place by the end of this month. Additionally, the temporary fix that restored services around 5:00 PM on the 26th is still in place, and will remain so until NESC is able to complete their more permanent solution. An additional issue exposed by this outage is related to the AT&amp;T cell site in Grand Marais. While the majority of services in Cook County were restored within six hours, this particular cell site was down for a little over 24 hours. We're currently working with our partners at AT&amp;T and FirstNet to confirm and remedy the situation. In the short term, we're updating our outage mitigation strategies related to the site, including the use of deployable mobile cell sites from FirstNet in the event of another outage. Lastly, I'd like to thank our partners at NESC and Arrowhead True North. Their commitment to providing high levels of service in Cook County is something I'm very thankful for. Outages like the one that occurred on the 26th shouldn't happen, and again, there are processes and statute in place to prevent them from happening. And the reason they do is because someone doesn't follow the process and breaks the law. These are complicated systems, and when issues do come up, I'm glad we have NESC and Arrowhead as resources. And it's signed Rowan Watkins, MIS Director. So, if you have any questions about that, I can't answer them because I don't know a thing about it. But Rowan, when he returns, if you do have questions, I'm sure we can get whatever information you need. I'm really grateful, I, I talked to Rowan the day of the incident and also over the weekend, um, and I'm really grateful for his follow-up to make sure that everything was done that could be done to restore service. You know, it's, it's just not okay if people can't make 911, 911 calls when something like this happens. And so, I'm grateful that, um, our partners are, are working to make sure that this situation doesn't repeat. And so, that's kind of what I have in the way of updates.
Well, thank you very much, and I know, um, I have a number of people from the business community, as well as constituents, who reached out with concerns about this and really appreciate that update today. So, I'm very glad that, that Rowan provided that information for us. Anything else? All right. We'll move on with employee concerns and commissioner concerns. Uh, we have some meetings coming up. Commissioner Storley, where are you headed this week?
I'll be headed to Alexandria for a conference there, but I would like to give a shout-out to AMC. In the, um, Minneapolis Star and Tribune, there was at least a three-quarter, uh, letter signed by the President, Todd, to the legislatures, that you have left us high and dry, and we have so many things that we need to do in our cities. It was signed by several people, several, um, boards and city councils, and we know the story. However, I think at least it was out there verbally and in a written form that we're very dissatisfied with what has happened. Now, of course, November 8th, we'll be looking at not Rob Eklund's position being eliminated, but hopefully, there'll be a whole new slate of legislators. He will be part of that again, and we can move forward, but we have to wait till February before we move forward with anybody or anything. So, it just creates a huge, as we're just finished talking about, money, and it creates a huge deficit for people to even know how to plan. So, I really appreciate AMC being part of that visually in the paper.
Well, and I want to thank you for attending this week. It's really important that we have our board represented there, so thank you. Other commissioners? Commissioner Hawkins?
I guess I'd just like to ask, I got a letter from Wadena. I'm assuming we all got that letter? And there it talked about property values, property taxes in Minnesota being screwed up, and how high our tax rate is. So, I'm glad to know you've all read it, and I think we should. I, I'm disappointed to not be at AMC this weekend because that would have been the reason I really wanted to talk to some of those people. So, I hope you have, get to have conversations with them about that letter and that chart, and what we can do to make sure that the state of Minnesota is more fair about how they. And Assessor Bob also, I gave a copy to him, maybe he received one anyway, but, yeah.
Yeah. Commissioner Mills?
That letter tickled me because it implied that the spending of individual counties should be subsidized by other counties. There certainly are state mandates that counties need to, uh, adhere to, but there's a lot that's not, and for other counties to subsidize those counties' decisions, I, it would surprise me. I, I cannot imagine that happening. But, I guess, I guess, you know, we have our fiscal disparities, and that's a region, so it'll base, it would basically be a statewide fiscal disparity, but.
That's what it reminded me of.
Yeah, yeah, but what a, I mean.
And just what we've seen with the, with the complexity and everything, and how it gets skewed with the first, I was like, oh, my goodness, no.
The, I mean, those tables were very revealing, so I, I do appreciate the letter for that, but, but the, the, it spoke to, uh, the competency of our board. I really like you guys.
I like you too.
Yeah, I wish, I wish the legislature would be more judicious about, or think about, simplicity in the tax system. It's so hard for the public to understand it, and it's gotten worse with fiscal disparity with, uh, there is a change back, you know, 2000, 2002. They created the state general tax, and it adjusted how school taxes. It's a just, it's a huge complication that I think you could address straightforward in a more simple manner, but.
Seem like it.
And then the public has a better, they can have a better chance of understanding what we're doing.
I also just want to recognize the potential benefit that Cook County could receive from a program like that, but it, it, it would be quite complicated.
Beware of unintended consequences.
Yes, yes, yes.
Absolutely. Well, and I, I think that goes to government sticking their fingers too much into some things, which, here I am, saying, less government. On budgets, yeah.
I, I just really value local control, and if, if, if the legislature did anything, well, they will do something, but. Right?
Well, you're always hopeful.
Won't they? Um, I, I would really appreciate just having more, more lateral there with, with what we could do. So, that's where I would, that's, that's where I would lobby myself. Thank you for coming. I know, that's, I forgot about that.
Commissioner Hawkins, you have some meetings you're attending this week.
Uh, yeah. Well, Highway Advisory coming up, revolving loan, I think. I was so worried about this one, I didn't look at the rest. What order I mean next?
Commissioner Mills?
And, and I'm still wrestling with the AMC, um, conference. At, at this point, I'm leaning that direction. I apologize to Administrator Yorki for, for waffling back and forth on that. I'm not holding you accountable to any of my reservations or plans. I'll just have to do that and then submit my expenses to, to, with an expense report. So, I know that's not the best way for us to do business, but.
Well, sometimes you need flexibility.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. I'm still, that's kind of where I'm leaning at this point, but.
Okay. And I will not be attending, I'm going to the MCIT, navigating key land use issues, and so. and so, members of the Board of Adjustment and Planning Commission will be attending that in St. Cloud.
That's good to hear. The whole board?
Not the entire board, but as many people that were able to get off work as possible are attending.
That's good.
So, that will be done. Other items?
The other thing that we alluded to earlier in the meeting is that the AMC annual meeting will be, I think, Monday, Wednesday, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, the first full week of December. So, and that's why we set our TNT hearing as we did.
Absolutely.
And I apologize for not getting upcoming meetings on the agenda, but again, it was done by a complete amateur, so.
(laughing) When's April coming back?
Not soon enough.
Yeah. One thing I did want to mention, thinking about our discussions about our community members and just the great needs that we have. Yesterday, I attended the Cook County Council on Aging monthly meeting and asked for some data, and they served a thousand fifty-two meals to people last month.
Wow.
I think that is just amazing. And their visitor log, their sign-ins for just all kinds of activities and events that they have, seven hundred and twenty-six people. So, it was really fun to look at that, to think about what their use of medical equipment has been. They're giving that out to the community, foot care, all the different programs that they have. So, it's really exciting to know that even though we have these great needs in our community, our community is doing everything they can to support those needs and meet those needs. Commissioner Mills?
Little tangent again, but we talk about vision, we talk about our challenges, and, and we talk about the state legislature. I, I would very much like us to, I'm just putting this on our radars. I would very much like to look into potential tax circuit breakers, they're called. The Homestead Credit is one such tax circuit breaker. And, you know, the burden on our fixed income residents is clearly growing, and, and, you know, we, we determine that. But I would love to develop a program, and it would be quite complicated and would require the state's approval, to develop a program that could better support those on fixed incomes, or even, I mean, I'm the sort of person who would go even for low income, if we could somehow get that tax relief, because we know a lot of wealth is coming to Cook County, and we know a lot of the burden is on those that don't have quite as much wealth. And so, if we can find some, some way to equalize, and, and, you know, this is maybe contrary to my snubbing of the, the state fiscal disparity, but, but I'd just like to start looking at that or thinking about it, and, and I'm sure that does not inspire Brady. This sounds like a migraine waiting to happen, but, but that's where my mind goes. We're talking housing, we're talking childcare, and I think seniors are, are next on the list for, for help, so. There's my two cents.
All right. Anything else? We have correspondents, we have our lodging tax comparison for June, and then some important recognition of our staff. Lindy Mongan, twenty-nine years. Rowan Watkins, not here to celebrate his ten years with us. Mike Keport, three years. Kathy Polly, one year. Andrea DeBoer, nine years. Kelly Schleep, eight years. Amanda Anderson, four years. Lori Erickson, five years. Think about all those fabulous reports she's provided us. Jade Waltman, five years. Rich Wojcik, four years. Melissa Rexrode, nine years. Two departments. And Pat Eliasen, twenty-seven years. So, we have some very dedicated employees, and we want to thank them all for their service. And with that, I'd accept a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Spalleson. Is there support?
Support.
Motion and support. I bet there's no further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you all.
Another reason meeting.
Hey, you know what? I have an idea. I have an idea for you. I would love for you to sit in the auditor's office and watch tax, collect taxes, collect tax payments.
Sure.
And hear the story, see the story, watch the lady cry. I think if we do pass...